Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Ventura County Planning Commission. If you please rise and face the American flag. Place your hand over your heart, repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. At this point in time, before we do the recall, if you have a cellphone, put it on stun or silent, which I forgot to do, so just a reminder for myself, if I can get through all the steps. At this time, I'd like the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Riddick?
Here.
Commissioner Omskow?
Here.
Commissioner Westner?
Present.
Commissioner Westner?
Here.
Item number four on our agenda is the section set aside for public comments. These are comments that are not already agendized on the calendar for today. Please be advised, any comments that you do make can only be received, and only general questions for information purposes. The commission cannot act because of the rest of the public has not been noticed that we would deliberate on them. Are there any additional public comments? Seeing none, or hearing none, then we'll move on to approval of number five, the approval of the September 19 minutes. Commissioners?
Move for recommended act.
Second?
Do we have a problem?
Oh, we gotta do the voting thing on the floor. So he has to hit the motion button. Do I have a second? Yet, use your mouse.
Paul's second.
Paul's second. Okay. All right. All those in favor say yes, if not, say no. And if you weren't here, you may abstain. It's so quiet when that happens. Okay, we have a 4-0 vote. The motion passes. All right, going back to our agenda. Item number six. This is the PL 13-005, Pacific Breeze Drive in Camarillo. And as soon as the... I can get the pull-up staff report. I'm getting loaded. There we go. Hey, got a little humor in this, don't I? And I'm trying to find who our presenter is, and I'm not coming up with the name. So my apologies, staff, please introduce yourselves. Again, my apologies.
Chair Westner. Excuse me, Chair Westner. Did you want to go to county council?
Yeah, my apologies, I got confused by the technology, so I sold 65-year-olds that way. At this point in time, before staff presents, given the specific nature of this appeal, the fact that there are four commissioners before you, and the nature... I want to make sure we get the technicals, county staff, council direction. Sir?
Thank you, Chair Westner. So before your commission this morning are three separate appeals of zoning violations that the planning director determined to exist. And because all three zoning violations arise from the same subdivision, they share many of the same background facts and circumstances. And so planning will... Planning staff will kind of give an overview of those common facts and circumstances in the staff report. But just keep in mind that the three separate appeals and underlying violations are different cases. And so what you all are going to do is to vote and determine each appeal in sequence, one at a time, instead of clumping them together, because they are separate appeals. And so then the other issue to keep in mind is that obviously you're one commissioner short today. The planning division, because these are violations of zoning violations, the planning division has the burden of proof to basically prove the existence of the violations. And what that means is that the planning division requires three affirmative votes to uphold the violations. And so if there's a 2-2 vote, that means the violations will not stand. And so if there is a situation where it is a 2-2 vote, keep in mind that one option would be, and it's at your discretion, would be to continue the item, to let Commissioner Dukas hear the matter and get up to speed at the next meeting and have the full commission vote on it. But just something to keep in mind.
Okay, so a 2-2 vote normally would be a denial. But since this is an appeal, it would be an approval. Am I understanding this correctly?
It would be a denial, basically, of the violation.
Right.
Because, yeah, because it's a violation, planning division has the burden of proof. And you're right, if it was a permit application, then the permit application would be denied, because in that case, the applicant would have the burden.
Thank you very much. Any further questions of county council, as far as procedure? Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Westner and fellow planning commissioners. My name is Franca Rosenbrenn. I am the case planner for the three appeals on the agenda today. Before I go into each appeal separately, I'd like to give you a background to the development of the subdivision in which each of the appellant resides and is relevant to each of the appeals. Each appellant resides in Track 5175, commonly known as the Santa Rosa Highlands. The Santa Rosa Highlands is located at the very eastern portion of the Santa Rosa Valley. It's bordered on the east by Moor Park Road, which is adjacent to property that's with... directly in the city of Thousand Oaks jurisdiction. It's bordered on the south by Santa Rosa Road, and approximately... It's approximately a mile and a half from the city of Moor Park, which is to the north of the subdivision. The site can be accessed via Santa Rosa Road. In 1999, the Board of Supervisors approved a subdivision of a 99-acre parcel into 23 residential lots, also two common lots, which are the roads and the common open space area. Each lot ranges from about one acre to 15 acres, and each lot has a specified building envelope.
Pardon me, if you could speak a little more into the microphones, you'll lift them up.
Sorry.
That's quite all right. It's just we have to tape these up.
Sure, I understand.
Is it really taping anymore, or we go to disk? Am I using the wrong term? Oh, okay. We're going into the cloud. All right, thank you.
Okay, these are a couple photos, street view, taken from Santa Rosa Road. And the top picture shows the... Let's see if I can use a pointer. The homes located on the ridge here is part of the subdivision. The topography is steep and rugged, and the elevation ranges from 500 to 800 feet. The bottom photo shows the entrance to the subdivision, looking northwest from Santa Rosa Road. Here's another street view from the Bridlewood Tract, which is directly west of the Santa Rosa Highlands development. This is looking east from Sunny Lane. I'm sorry, I wanted to point out that these are the houses within the Santa Rosa Highlands tract, as well as this one here. To reiterate, the Board of Supervisors approved the subdivision of a 99-acre parcel into 23 residential lots, and the parcel map was recorded in 2002. As part of this approval, the Board of Supervisors adopted a mitigated negative declaration with specific mitigation measures to reduce the potentially significant impacts to a level of less than significant. Most of the mitigation measures have been satisfied, except for the biological and the visual resources. In return for authorizing the development in this area, biological mitigation measures were implemented to protect the native, existing native vegetation within the common open space areas and those areas designated as common open space within each individual lots. These mitigation measures are implemented through the permit conditions, as well as through the creation of a deed restriction contained in the covenants, conditions, and restrictions of the lot, of the tract. The CCNRs and the conditions of approval for this subdivision identify a specific building envelope within each lot. And development and/or future uses are prohibited from taking place beyond the specified building envelope pursuant to the deed restriction. And just to point out, this dashed line outlines a specific building envelope for each lot. Here is an aerial view. It's a closer view of a lot. It shows the outline of the lot itself, and then the red line shows the actual building envelope within that lot. The MND noted that approximately 70% of the tract would be under restricted open space. And with this measure, approximately 75% of that area would protect existing habitat. The green area shows the designated open space areas of the tract. As part of the implementation of the protection of the native habitat, a landscaping plan was reviewed and approved by the planning division, which consists of native vegetation and drought-tolerant species. The landscaping acts as a buffer between the developed area and the existing native habitat within each lot. The landscaping is located directly beyond each specified building envelope of each lot, and it ranges from lot to lot. As you can see in Lot 20 there, it's a lot larger than in Lot 19. The purpose of the landscaping plan is threefold. It's to protect and rehabilitate all the existing coastal sagebrush, chaparral, and cactus areas; to create a visual, future visual barrier, buffer between adjacent properties and subdivisions; and to control erosion and mitigate the visual impacts of man-made slopes. Additionally, the landscape... The required landscaping plan implemented the visual mitigation measures. As I noted before, the landscaping is a buffer, or acts as a buffer between the identified habitat areas and the developed areas on each lot. The visual mitigation measures also restrict development beyond each specified building envelope, especially those lots that are visible from Santa Rosa Road. In 2006, three modifications to the recorded CCNRs occurred. These modifications pertain to open space enforcement authority and development on Lot 3 beyond the building envelope. The first modification authorized each individual homeowner to relocate their fence beyond the building envelope to a maximum of 12 feet from the top of the downhill slope on each lot. This illustration shows the fence line before, which was located right on the ridge. And after the modification, it shows where the fence could potentially be, which is 12 feet from that top hill, top of the downhill slope. There are certain conditions that must be followed if the fence was going to be relocated. And those... And some of the conditions are that the property owner must install and maintain the landscaping within such fencing. And that landscaping must be consistent with other hillside landscaping, which is natives and drought-tolerant species, and must be approved by the county of Ventura. And any irrigation systems within the fencing shall be maintained by the property owner. The next modification required a homeowner to obtain approval in writing by the planning director for structures to extend into the open space area beyond the building envelope. And the third modification authorized the construction of solar panels beyond the building envelope of Lot 3. There was an application that was submitted to the county of Ventura for this request. It was reviewed and approved. The location of Lot 3 is located at the very western portion of the lot. And the solar panels were required to be completely screened from view of other lots and residential development adjacent to Lot 3, as well as revising the CCNRs to reflect this change. In 2009, the county received a complaint about the lack of required landscaping within the tract, that there were missing trees and shrubs where they should have been along the slopes. And the county investigated this complaint and contracted with a landscape architect to conduct a site inspection of the tract to compare what was existing on site with the pre-existing conditions and mitigation measures of the subdivision. And the landscape architect reported several inconsistencies. The required landscaping areas were... Had bare slopes, sparse landscaping, and were not complete... Were bare, basically. The irrigation lines had been broken and severed along the slopes. And throughout the track, there was landscaping that involved non-native invasive species, such as the canary date palms. So since the initial inspection and investigation into these complaints, we've... The county has had several meetings with the HOA and the developer to try to resolve these issues. The county has informed the HOA that in order to retain the landscaping, such as the non-native vegetation, that they would need to submit a modification application to the planning division and go before a designated body for that approval. To date, the site, the subdivision, is still not in compliance with these conditions. Yes?
Brief question, clarification. Who was supposed to submit the landscape plan? The HOA or the developer?
They were going to submit it together as a group.
Thank you.
Okay. So that concludes the background portion of the presentation. Okay, on to the first item, or first appeal case, Appeal number PL 13-0085, which is an appeal of a notice of violation. Item number six. And the appellants are Paul and Roberta Johnson. The project is located at 13536 Pacific Breeze Drive in Camarillo. The appellant's property is located on Lot 20 of the Santa Rosa Highlands. The lot size... Excuse me. This is the wrong... I'm sorry. This is the wrong slide. They switched it. Okay. It's at the very end of the... Of the background portion of the... It's... It's not going to be a separate PowerPoint, it's part of the background.
Yeah, it's not separate.
Just... Okay, that's fine. Sorry about this. Okay. There we go. Okay, the lot size of the Johnsons' property is 1.14 acres, and the building envelope is approximately half an acre. As mentioned previously in the background portion of the presentation, there are pre-existing conditions and mitigation measures which divide each lot into specified areas, specific areas. There's the building envelope, and then anything beyond the building envelope is considered designated open space. Within the designated open space area, there is a required landscaping area and a native habitat preservation area. There is also a thin sliver of privately maintained landscaping located directly west of the building envelope that the property owner is required to maintain. The appellant is appealing the planning division's issuance of a notice of violation, that's PV 13-0016, for the installation of a ground-mounted photovoltaic system without the required permits within the designated open space area of Track 5175. This is a zoomed-in photograph taken from Santa Rosa Road, where you can see the photovoltaic system looking north. It's located on the south-facing slope. Here is a zoomed-out picture. It shows the solar system and also the native habitat in the area. Here is an aerial view of the appellant's property with the specified building envelope outlined in red and the solar panels located beyond the building envelope. The appellant's grounds of appeal number one. The solar array is allowed under the Solar Rights Act. The Act requires solar to be permitted through a nondiscretionary process. No restrictions related to visual or aesthetic concerns are permitted. Refusal to permit the array was in violation of the Act. I'd like to bring your attention back to the notice of violation. That's Exhibit 13, which states that installation of a ground-mounted photovoltaic system was installed without the required permits and within the designated open space area in Santa Rosa Highlands tentative tract map on the subject lot. So this is the central issue before your commission, is whether or not the solar panel was installed without permits and whether the county issued the notice of violation inappropriately. So the planning division has no record that the appellant has obtained permits either from the planning division or from the building and safety division. And the county planning division has not denied or refused the permit for an installation of a solar panel since no application has been submitted for review. The appellant states that the Solar Rights Act requires a nondiscretionary process for the permitting of installations of solar panels. And the county is in compliance with this act, because according to the Non-Cost Zoning Ordinance, the required permit is a ministerial permit, which is called a zoning clearance. Also, to further encourage solar systems, the planning division and the building and safety division waive fees, waive permit fees for these types of uses on individual properties. Since 2012, the planning division has issued approximately 50 zoning clearances. So we get quite a number of those, and they're all... All the permits are waived, all the permit fees are waived. So we do encourage this. However, the appelle... The location of the appellant's solar array is located in an area that's under a deed restriction. And it's outside of the building envelope. And therefore, it would not qualify as a ministerial process. As noted before, they are... And there are pre-existing conditions. There are mitigation measures, or the deed restriction. And therefore, in order to change or alter those conditions, there's a specific process, and that process is to apply for a modification application. But please note that they could, and they... You know, the system may be installed through a ministerial process within the building envelope, either ground-mounted or roof-mounted. The site... The building envelope is approximately half an acre in size, and the footprint of the structures totals approximately 5,000 square feet. The county planning division is also in compliance with the Solar Rights Act concerning visual and aesthetic factors not being taken into account, because through the ministerial process, those factors are not taken into account. So we are in compliance with that section of the Act. Additionally, the Solar Rights Act authorizes reasonable restrictions to be imposed on the installation of solar energy systems, such as in this case, where the solar panel is located in an area under a deed restriction with pre-existing mitigation measures that were adopted by the Board of Supervisors. The county is obligated under SEQA to prohibit the installation of any structure that conflicts with the existing mitigation measures for the tract. The appellant's grounds of appeal number two. Conditions prohibiting construction outside of envelope are not applicable and have been waived for others in the subdivision. The planning division has not waived requirements of the prohibition of development outside of the building envelope for lots within the tract. There have been two cases in which we have authorized solar energy systems to develop outside of the building envelope, and I'll explain those. The first case is Lot 3. The developers in 2006 applied for... For an application for the solar energy systems to be located on Lot 3 beyond the building envelope. This application was reviewed and approved, and solely... Or not solely, based in part on the fact that it was located in an area at the very western portion of subdivision, not in view of the Santa Rosa... View of Santa Rosa Road, and due to its unique configuration as well. The... There was a condition to revise the CCNRs to reflect this change, and they were ultimately approved for that. Lot 4. A ministerial application was submitted to the planning division and was issued in error. So the... This has come to our attention, and we have put in place some tools to prevent this from happening again. The planning division provided public notice of this hearing in the Ventura County Star. We mailed notices to the property owners within 300 feet of the project site, and we posted it on the planning division website. and we posted it on the Planning Division website. The appellant's recommended actions: Reverse decision of Planning Division and void violation case number PV-13-0016. So, our response to that is just to bring you back to the original notice of violation. And did the appellant install a solar energy system on the lot without the required permits? And our answer to that is yes. And the Planning Division's recommended actions, and I'll read these verbatim from there. Number one, deny appeal case number PL-13-0085 for the reasons stated in the staff report. Two, find that the notice of violation was issued in accordance with the Ventura County Non-Causal Zoning Ordinance, Section 8114-3.6.1, and uphold the violations described therein. And three, designate the Planning Director and the Resource Management Agency as the custodian and location of the Record of Proceedings. This concludes the presentation for that appeal. If you have any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Rosengren? Before we do that, disclosures?
No disclosures.
I have no disclosures.
No disclosures.
I have to disclose, I live in Moor Park. I drive by the location twice daily, at a minimum, so I'm very familiar with it. I have not inspected it, it's just what a normal citizen would do from driving by. So, I have no expertise or additional information other than driving by it twice a day. Okay, any questions of Ms. Rosengren? Commissioner?
Dewey? Did you show us a, a slide of Lot 3 and Lot 4?
I have a slide of Lot 3. I don't have a slide of Lot 4, so I can show you.
Can you pull it back up again?
Sure. Laurie, can they pull that PowerPoint back up, please? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Richard? Could we go to the aerial view of the entire tract?
So, Lot 3 is south of Southern Cross Court. You can see it up there on the left side.
Do you have a pointer?
Yeah, sorry, yes, I do. Forgot about that. It's right here, Lot 3. Lot 4 is over here.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Ms. Rosengren, you showed on Lot 3 there that the application required the approval of the Architectural Committee, I assume that's the Architectural Committee, the HOA?
That's correct.
Oh, right, got an assumption right. So, therefore, the party on Lot 3 went through the HOA, went through their process, then brought the process to us for permitting, and then the county, through its process, recommended a modification to the CCNRs.
That's correct.
Thank you. Then the second question is, do you know if the appellant in front of us has applied to the Architectural Committee or the HOA for any permission?
I'm not aware of that.
All right, I'll save that for the appellant. Thank you. Okay, if not, then, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other information from staff before we proceed with the public hearing? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, just for those of you who are new to the process, I know Ms. Nesswinder is not, but what we do is we allow the, in this case, the appellant to have as much time as necessary to present their case. At that point in time, we open the public hearing. We take public testimony first for those in favor of the appellant. After that, those that would oppose the appellant. Then the appellant would, gets the last word and gets to rebut anything that they wish. Then the commission will deliberate with questions to staff or additional testimony that we would require. At that point in time, we will close the public hearing and deliberate for our decision. Okay, one more thing before we come, have you come up? If you've parked over here in Lot G, I believe it's called, it's a three-hour time limit. Hopefully, we're not here that long, but I just want you to be where we do ticket. And also, we will conveniently take a break about 10:05, because I've heard rumors we might have to duck under our chairs at about 10:15. Okay? I want to see this personally. Commissioner, on stop. All right, so with that, I have only one speaker card, but again, I will, if anybody else wants to speak. So, Ms. Nesswinder, if you would please, name an address.
Thank you, and good morning. Kate Nieswander, on behalf of the appellant. The address is PO Box 24617 in Ventura. I have a photo of Lot 4. I didn't make copies, but if, I'll give it to the clerk if Commissioner Rodriguez wants to take a look at it.
Understand, it becomes part of our record up here.
That's fine, I can keep it, I have a copy for myself, you can keep it. But in any case, the, the that's the only photo I have, it's not an aerial photo, it's just something we took from the ground, so you can see what it looks like. I do hope that you had a chance to read the letter we submitted concerning the Solar Rights Act. It was rather complicated, and I don't want to have to repeat that here today, but I do want to point out a couple of key points. The Planning Division's position is that introduction of the solar array into the landscape buffer area, oh, gentlemen in the booth, could I have the first JPG, please? The introduction of a solar array into that landscape buffer area is in violation of the conditions of this tract. But the legislature's made very specific findings that solar is a matter of statewide concern and that conditions restricting installation of solar arrays in a residential lot are void. Now, the section in question reads, "Any restriction or condition affecting any interest in real property that effectively prohibits or restricts the installation of a solar energy system is void and unenforceable." Now, Ms. Rosengren mentioned that there are conditions and restrictions on this law. Those are the exact type of conditions and restrictions that are void and unenforceable by the legislative mandate of the Solar Rights Act. The legislative findings explain why this is the case. They say that solar is good for California, and certainly, it's good for this county. I provided to the commission as an attachment to my letter, a study that was done showing that installation of solar in suburban neighborhoods provides a net benefit to the area. It's far more difficult to install solar on, for example, an apartment building and make it cost-effective for the owner. On the other hand, it's almost always cost-effective on a lot like this one, the one owned by the Johnsons. Now, there was some question about whether or not a permit was denied. The solar contractor came to the county and presented the application and was told at the counter, "We will not give you a permit because this is outside the building envelope." As a result, there's very little paperwork I can provide to you. They were told, "It will not be granted." And when they were, when the inquiry was made, well, this is, this is Solar Rights Act, this should be allowed. They were just simply told, "Outside the building envelope, no." So, whether or not we applied for a permit, I think, is not relevant to the discussion we have here today because we wouldn't get one anyway. And that was very clear from Ms. Rosengren's presentation. Doesn't matter if we put in an application, they would say no. More residential solar, and this is again going back to this legislative idea that solar is good for this area and for the state. More residential solar means less power plant upgrades, fewer of those massive wind farms that cause problems for raptors, eagles, bats, hawks, fewer concentrated power plants, more benefits for the electric grid. And these are the reasons why the Solar Rights Act was passed. The Planning Division believes that its hands are tied. They cannot void the conditions of this subdivision, they cannot say these conditions don't apply, even with the clear direction of the Solar Rights Act. Because they have to look at what's in their paperwork. But you can, this commission can, give the Planning Division direction on this very important issue. And that's what we're asking for today. The, Ms. Rosengren's presentation talked about this very limited issue, was this solar array issued without permits? Yes, and we agree, it was. Because they would not even accept the application. As a practical matter, how do we resolve this problem? We ask that you direct the Planning Division to accept the Johnsons' application for a solar array. That's normally done, as Ms. Rosengren indicated, through a zoning clearance. We just want the ability to submit the application to essentially back-permit this array. We have to show that it's safe, that it meets the concerns of the age, of the industry, the solar rights industry. And we can do that. As far as conditions go, I'd like you to look at the way this lot is, and it's important that we match it. This is Lot 20, this is the Johnsons' lot. Gentlemen, could I get the next slide, JPG number 2? Now, see that landscape buffer area, that pink area? Watch what happens when they put up the second lot. Guys in the booth, wake up. Second, second JPG. Thank you. You see how the landscape buffer area just went to almost nothing from being 90% of the Johnsons' lot? It's now a very, very small lot. This is the lot next door, the Libric lot, the Libric lot, which we're going to talk about in just a moment or two. There is a 130-foot-wide landscape buffer area on the Johnsons' lot. Using a small portion of that for a solar array cannot conceivably harm or interfere with the open space area, if that's what we're protecting. If we're going to be protecting the designated open space on the Johnsons' lot, using a few feet right next to the building envelope for a solar array is not going to cause harm. Now, I'm sorry, I'm sorry again, guys in the booth, could I have number 1 again? That's 130 feet wide. My solar is right up against the building envelope. I just don't see how that's going to interfere or cause a problem for the designated open space area that is a very small portion of this lot. One of the reasons that I wanted you to see the difference is that there is, uh, it seems almost arbitrary. I mean, on this lot, it's 130 feet wide, on the next lot, it's 50 feet wide, it's all over the map. And that's something that's going to become more important when we look at the other two appeals. The solar installed on Lots 3 and 4, you saw a photo of it in the Rosengren presentation, and I just gave you a photo of what's on Lot 4. We talked about shielding this from view, creating a vegetative buffer so that it's not very obvious, it's prettier, there's more aesthetics involved. The Johnsons made that offer to the county, "Well, we'll shield it, we'll provide vegetation." "We will," we offered, "take over the HOA responsibilities and re-vegetate the open space area and make sure that that's okay. We'll do whatever it takes to make this work." And we were just simply told, "We cannot do that, we've got conditions, you can't go outside the building envelope." And that was the end of the discussion. The end of the discussion with the Planning Division, but not with this commission. We believe that you have the ability and the authority to direct the Planning Commission to accept the application. We're happy to put up screening, vegetative screening, we're happy to provide all the information that this array is the kind that is routinely processed in the solar industry and is safe and has no problems. What we're trying to emphasize today is that what's happened is that these conditions imposed on the subdivision in 1999 for the building envelope never took into account that solar would boom the way that it has and did not take into account the fact that right now, the legislature says in the Civil Code, Section 714B, the one that I quoted to you in the letter, it says that conditions like this are void and unenforceable. That's pretty clear direction. All we're asking for today is a direction from this council to let the Johnsons submit an application to the Planning Division and have them accept it for permitting outside the building envelope. And then one more comment. We did get a letter this morning, I know that in our letters, all three letters to you, we talked about the fact that an HOA modification had been approved for the, in order to deal with things like the landscaping and like the solar. We received a letter this morning from the HOA's brand-new attorney saying that the vote of the homeowners, which is what I was relying upon from September 18th, is not in the cards anymore. And there, apparently, there's somebody here that's going to be speaking to that issue. But we were told that the HOA has kind of cut loose our little boat and that we're on our own. So, we cannot make that representation to this commission that the HOA will be submitting a modification application. We don't have any cooperation on that right now. It may happen, may not, I don't know, as of right now. There was a vote of the homeowners that I relied upon, but I'm being told that that's not going to happen now. So, really, what we're looking for today is, for the Johnsons, is just that ability to submit the application and prove that this array is, is properly and competently installed. Thank you.
Any questions of Ms. Nesswinder? But remember, you have opportunity to rebut at the end.
Oh, wait a second.
All right, all right.
Kate, your position is that this solar act preempts the tract conditions completely and the deed restrictions?
Yes, sir. And I think that the code, the Civil Code section that I cited to you says that very clearly.
Do we have a representative of the Homeowners Association here today?
I don't know, I believe, I believe I was told somebody would show up, but I, I'm not sure.
Has your client made any attempt to obtain Homeowners Association action to modify the tract conditions?
Oh, there have been many, many, multiple discussions with the homeowners, well, let's go back. Beginning in May, when this first came to, when, I don't think the Johnsons were actually involved that early, but I know that there have been meetings between the HOA board, including a gentleman named Jim Hawes, who's our president, and some of the others with the county, trying to deal with the various issues that have been raised throughout this subdivision. Not just the Johnsons' solar, there's problems with the entranceway apparently is not in compliance with the conditions. Ms. Rosengren provided that three-page summary that I attached to the letter showing who's got a problem. This one was the developers' issue, this is the HOA issue, this is, and the only one that is the part of the individual homeowners is the solar array and then the landscaping on the other two appeals. So, we had multiple, multiple meetings trying to work this out, made multiple offers to try to figure out a way to come to a conclusion on this for the homeowners, even knowing that the HOA had things it had to do. It either has to do the designated open space area revegetation, it either has to do that and revegetate it and irrigate it, or it has to modify the conditions. That's a given. For us, we're looking at the landscape buffer area in a slightly different way, and that really applies to the, the other two appeals. Did I answer your question correctly?
I think so. Part of the problem I have with this is we seem to have a tract-wide problem of apparent inaction by a Homeowners Association, which has an obligation and a $400,000 performance bond somewhere in there. And it seems to me that curing your problem won't help other people, and it seems to me the appropriate thing to do is to come in for a modification that involves the entire tract, and it should be the Homeowners Association. And if they wouldn't do it, I'd sue them, make them do it.
Are we looking for new business counsel?
I don't know.
We'll be calling you tomorrow.
We've got, we've got three lots here, but we obviously have everybody in violation. And we need to solve the entire problem, not just one of them. It's hard for me to believe that you, you think you can avoid a permit to put in the solar panels, and yet you say you want to come back in and show the county everything is safe, et cetera. Well, that's the whole, that's the whole reason for the permitting process, you know, health and safety. I, I can't, I can't see that you can avoid the permit. I, I understand you're telling me that you, they said they wouldn't give you one. Do you have your contractor here?
No, I do not.
Do you know who at the county said that one wouldn't be given?
Carlos.
Okay. How do you reconcile that with the fact that Lot 3 got a permit, went through the Homeowners Association?
You know, I can't reconcile that, I can't. And, and I know that Lot 4 was given a permit through the zoning clearance process without any appeal to the, to the HOA. And it, it was, now we're told it was an error. So, we have two solar arrays permitted without an issue. I know that there was a question earlier about whether or not the Johnsons- I know that there was a question earlier about whether or not the Johnsons went to the HOA, the Architectural Committee.
Right.
I'm told by Mrs. Johnson, who's here, that they submitted their plans for the house at the time. It included the pool and all the other materials, and she believes, although, you know, it's been a couple of years, she believes that the solar was also on that application. So the project was approved by the Architectural Committee. When the solar contractor went to the county, that's when things went wrong, that they were told at the counter, and I asked, and this guy apparently goes to the counter pretty frequently, that Carlos said, "No, outside the building envelope, can't do it." And that process where, I believe Ms. Rosengren referenced that, that after the mistake on Lot 4, the county made sure that the folks at the counter were very aware of this subdivision, you have building envelopes, don't permit outside the subdivision. So when the profits went in, and that's not part of our appeal today, but the profits went in and they applied for solar, and it very clearly showed in all the photos that it was outside the building envelope, they gave them the zoning clearance for the solar, but scratched out the location and put a little arrow, and it's on the zoning clearance, must be inside building envelope. So even if you go in and ask for it and locate it outside the building envelope, they're going to make sure it's very clear it's inside and we will not allow it anywhere else. So it's... Applying for the permit was just impossible.
How do you reconcile the rights of the other property owners in the tract to rely on the deed restrictions, et cetera, to prevent building within those areas?
Well, I think that in this particular situation, the solar array is the only kind of building that the state has specifically preempted these conditions. And preemption is not something that could have been contemplated at the time of the imposition of the conditions, but preemption is something that happens from a legal standpoint all the time.
Thank you. You answered my follow-up question. You answered my question whether or not they had made the application. You've represented that they believed they did. So I'm not... I concur with my colleague here, having been involved with the Davis Sterling Act and a few other things. I'm looking at the process in multiple levels here, and I appreciate your client feels they've been caught in the catch-22 loop here. So just understand, we'll get to that point. Paul?
You know, I'm kind of curious. This solar panel array is right at the edge of the buffer area, correct? I mean, why didn't the appellant simply move it 10 feet past the fence and all? We wouldn't be having this conversation in the first place.
This photo doesn't show it very clearly. Where is that corner? Ah-huh. You see that shaded area? That's the building envelope. The construction goes pretty much to the edge of the envelope. Moving the array, which you can't see because of the way this is set up, there was another photo that's included in the packet that shows it better, but the array is actually down here where this area is.
Can we go back to the picture of the array?
You know, you have to put the... Could you explain that to me?
It was one of your first slides.
Yeah. Can we put back on the PowerPoint? Make it happen. Okay. Let's see. Well, maybe you don't have it. Oh, no, maybe. Oh, no, I do. It's at the very end. Okay. Oh, that was it. There we go. Thank you very much. So you can see the array. The only place that this array would be possible, I guess, would be over here in the side yard.
Or you put it on the roof.
Or you could put it on the roof. And this roof, again, it's kind of hard to tell because of the nature of the photo, but the roof is multi-layered. It's like there's no place that you could easily put in a array, let's put it that way.
I think the word is "cambaliered."
Thank you.
Yeah, so I have an architect friend. He keeps saying that word.
But you can see from the photo that we're not talking about an area that's simple and flat like my roof. It's just two sides. There's a top and there's two sides. This is not what you got here. So it is a difficult process.
Thank you.
Rick?
When was the home constructed? And when were the panels installed?
2007.
When the permit was denied?
2010.
So three years after the fact?
Yes. Oh, the home was constructed in '07, and then they purchased it in '09, is what I'm being told. And then the panels went in in '10.
And I thought I heard you make a representation that at the time, the construction permits were initially submitted for approval. It included solar paneling location.
That is the recollection of the homeowner, but she can't say for sure. She's saying that's what she thought, but we don't have the plans with us.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Kate? Okay, thank you. All right, again, protocol is if anybody would like to speak in favor of the appellant's position, you can come up, and then we'll just ask you to fill out a speak card. I'm not seeing anybody rushing to the microphone, okay? Anybody that would oppose the appellant, and I believe we have a lady in... Come forward, state your name and address for the record, and then when you complete, just fill out a card for the clerk.
Thank you all, and thanks for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Sandra Gottlieb, G-O-T-T-L-I-E-B, 11900 West Olympic Boulevard, Suite 700, L.A. 90064. My firm, Swetelson Gottlieb, represents the homeowners' association, the corporate entity through the then-sitting Board of Directors. Ms. Nieswander, who I haven't met before, is correct. I am relatively new as legal counsel to the association, but fortunately, I had an opportunity to meet with the Board of Directors, except for two of Ms. Nieswander's clients, and I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly. Both Mr. Johnson and Ms. Profit are also Board of Director members for the association, so they have these submissions, and they sit on the Board of Directors. The association has advised me, and this is through the association's managing agent and the three remaining board members, that there's no record at the association that any original application for the construction of this home on this lot included any solar panel plan on any plan or subsequent plan. The... I do want to point out that the act that has been referred to, the requires for the installation of solar panels or systems, and any deed restriction to the contrary is void or voidable, subject to reasonable requests, which have to do with not increasing the original cost more than $2,000 and not reducing the efficiency by more than 20% of what was originally represented. We have no documentation or data that would support that either request for modification or a request to the association for the installation was given, so that the association could have responded to your questions of, "We're not opposed to this," and the board is still not opposed to it. They just want the homeowners to put it within the building envelope. There's no record that any request was made to the association. However, the board president, while the solar panels were being installed, said, "You cannot do that. That is a violation of the plan, and it is a violation of the CCNRs, which are covenants and conditions that run with the land." There's no direct quote back from the Johnsons to the board president in response to that statement, so I can't... I wasn't there. I don't know what was said. The president did suggest that they move the panels to either their roof or another position on their lot. Although the picture looks like the property, the solar panels are right up butt to the property line, is actually a 50-foot differential, which in the schemes of that whole property is not significant, but I want to be clear that there is space there, and so the solar panels could have been moved into the building envelope. Solar panels have really evolved in the last decade, and I believe that when this plan was created, that probably was not in consideration. However, you can install panels on delivered roofs and property and obtain the same amount of penetration for your energy source as you do on a flat surface, at least within that 20% variance range. There's no documentation that any request was made for that at any time. The reason that I communicated with the Johnsons' counsel last night is I saw the letter to for the appeal and saw that there were misrepresentations that this matter was sent out to homeowner vote. And it isn't something that is off the table as represented now, but rather, it never was on the table. And the Board of Directors resents the misrepresentation to the commission and the information that they have at their own hands, as they are board members, and they are familiar with the business of the association. So they are sitting on both sides of this lot line. In reference to one of your comments about you should force the association to do that, to take action, the association can take action and engage in litigation with the Johnsons to move the solar panel installation within the building envelope, however, sees no reason to do so because they are in clear violation of the plan, and therefore, the expectation is that the commission will see that they are in violation of that plan and prohibit the approval of their appeal.
Anything else, Ms. Gottlieb?
No.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Gottlieb? The only question I have, and I appreciate the fact you're new to the case. Mike, so my only question is, and if you can't answer it, I appreciate that, is whether or not, since this came up in January of '09, and the Jim Hawes and John Innis toured the property with the county staff, do you know if at that time, if the HOA filed any notice of violation against...
The association's Board of Directors did not know this whole action was in play until it received a copy of the notice of violations issued to the Johnsons. And I would like to turn around and ask the community manager if that's a correct statement, since we are on the record, if I may?
Certainly.
Will Witt is the community manager for the association. Is that a correct statement?
That's mine, Jane.
Okay. And he was the managing agent, his company was at the time, and remains the managing agent, as the managing agent works directly with the association's Board of Directors.
Okay, thank you. We may ask you further questions, so please don't leave.
I won't.
Please have a seat. Thank you very much. All right, is there anybody that opposes the appeal present? Hearing none. Kate?
Just a couple of quick things. First of all, Mr. Hawes, the president, and I'm going to have Mrs. Johnson stand up if you would, if you could just stand up, Roberta. We are... We know for a fact that Mr. Hawes never, ever said that the solar array on the Johnsons' property was in violation of anything. Mrs. Johnson will testify, if you'd like her to, that she never heard that from Mr. Hawes or anyone else on the Board of Directors at any time. And as far as the idea that the president said move this array, that just never happened. So that's an important thing to know. As far as the other issue that was raised by Ms. Gottlieb, there was a meeting on September 18th, and we were there, at least some of us were there. Mr. Librick, I don't believe, was there, but Mr. and Mrs. Profit and Mrs. Johnson were there. I was there, the homeowners' meeting, annual meeting, big discussion, are we going to do a modification application? And the resounding, resounding vote was, "Absolutely, let's do it." And the question that was brought up by the manager of the association was, "This hasn't been properly agendized, so we need to agendize it. Let's deal with that in a couple of weeks." And then, a couple of weeks later, about a month later, actually, not quite, the board met. Mrs. Profit, Mrs. Johnson are board members, but they weren't there that night, and that's when Ms. Gottlieb was hired to represent the HOA, just a very, very short time ago. The one of the people who voted to bring on Ms. Gottlieb, by the way, was the guy on Lot 4, who already has his solar array. Lot 3, excuse me, who already has his solar array. So I think that some of the representations you just heard are the result of not being as familiar with this file as possible in a two-week period of time. But no one from the HOA ever complained about this array, never. So with that, we leave it in your good hands.
Any further questions, Ms. Nieswander? Thank you very much. Okay, again, we're at the point where a commission can ask questions of staff or any of the public that wishes to testify. Any questions of staff before we close the public hearing?
Yes.
Commissioner Ransohn?
County Council, would you please give us your understanding of whether or not the Solar Act preempts the CCNRs, the tract conditions?
I guess I would answer that by saying that I completely agree with Ms. Gottlieb.
Correct.
Ms. Gottlieb's explanation about... She referred to Civil Code, Section 714B, that specifically allows reasonable restrictions to be placed on solar arrays. And Ms. Gottlieb accurately stated what the definition of reasonable restrictions is. And so I do not agree that the Solar Rights Act preempts anything. In fact, it's the way it's drafted, it takes into account the possibility, or it specifically allows reasonable restrictions to be placed on solar arrays. Now, in terms of the Subdivision Map Act conditions we're talking about here, the SEQA conditions we're talking about here, I disagree that the Solar Rights Act preempts those other statutory schemes. And it's the job of the Planning Division to, to the extent possible, take both statutes into account, or the three statutes into account, and apply them reasonably. And that's what we've done here. And just like a lot of state laws, there's a lot of rules, as you know, but you have to take them all into account and act accordingly. And I conducted a lot of legal research into this issue, and I didn't find any case law saying that the Solar Rights Act preempts SEQA or the Subdivision Map Act, and I'm quite frankly, not surprised. Thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Any last comments, Ms. Rosengren? Or your boss?
I... Well, I was going to note the same thing that our county council stated, and that we weren't aware that the Johnsons had come in to apply for an application over the counter. And typically, we would give them a denial, zoning clearance, it's considered, or staff would come and notify us that these people would like to apply for a solar system outside the building envelope, and then we would go from there. We have also mentioned a few times to the appellant's counsel that they can apply now through us, and we can go through that process, which is apply for an application, we'll review it and look at it. So we have given them the opportunity, since this came to our attention, to do that.
Hold that thought, because I'm going to ask you a question on that. Anything else, though, from staff?
For the record, I'm Tricia Meyer, manager in the Planning Division. There were a couple of things, I think, I just wanted to clarify on Franca's last comments there regarding if someone were to come to the planning counter right now and ask to do a solar array in this development, and they wanted to do it over the counter as a ministerial process, they would be told, if it were outside the building envelope, that that's not possible. Ms. Nieswander, in her comments, mentioned that the... Ms. Nicewender, in her comments, mentioned that the Profits had come in with an application for a solar array inside the building envelope, which is actually inaccurate, as far as I'm aware. What came in was actually an application for a solar array outside of the building envelope. It was approved as such, and when it went to the Building Department, it somehow, one of the diagrams showed it outside the building envelope, and the Building Department caught that. It came back to the Planning Division, and that's when the notes apparently were written onto that site plan that said it had to be within the building envelope in order to be approved. So they, as yet, do not have a solar system in place on the Profits' property. As far as the Johnsons' property, we were not aware of the Johnsons coming in at some point in time to ask for a solar array permit. But again, if they had, they likely would have gotten the response from our front counter that if it's not within the building envelope, you have to go through a different process. And we've told them all along, there's a different process for something that, it's a discretionary process. We don't approve them ministerially over the counter if they're not within the building envelope in this particular tract based on the SEQA mitigation measures. Now, I know Ms. Nicewender also said it wouldn't cause harm to add a small solar system in the designated open space on the Johnsons' property, and that may be true, but it needs to be analyzed in light of the SEQA mitigation measures that were approved with this tract. And that's what we've been telling the property owners all along, to submit a permit, to modify the landscape plan, to include the solar arrays, and have the decision-makers make a decision on that.
I just want to add a couple of things that I heard that were concerning to me. I heard Ms. Nicewender say that they wouldn't apply for a permit because they knew we would say no, yet they went ahead and did it anyway. Right? I think that just flies in the face of what we do here at the county. If, you know, it would be the same for a mining permit, if you thought we would say no, but you went out and mined anyway, right? You need to obtain the appropriate permits. That's the law. And then also, all of the discussions about not knowing, you know, we didn't know this wasn't going to be allowed, you know, I recall this permit happening, I was here at the time that it happened. There was a biological deed restriction, there was an archaeological deed restriction, there was a visual issue. These were all things taken into account in the SEQA document. And I know years go by, and new people buy, and people forget that there are conditions and restrictions on property you own. And simply because you own all of the property doesn't mean that it's all available to build as you will. So that is done through a title report, all of this information to be available, you can buy this lot, and this lot comes with restrictions. Part of the restrictions is you can't build your fence more than 10 feet down, you can't build anything out of the solar array, and you can't add anything except the vegetation that was approved on the existing plan unless you apply for a different plan, right? And so that's what our message has been all along. It's not impossible, but there's SEQA mitigation measures, and SEQA clearly calls out how those mitigation measures can be reworked or redone, and that process hasn't been done. So this seems on its face to be a very small project. We're going to talk about fencing, we're going to talk about landscaping, we're going to talk about solar arrays. But that was the commitment to the board, this was the process that they said that they were going to build, that was the commitment to the community, that we would be very careful of the visual impacts from the community, we'd be very careful of native vegetation, and that has not happened over time. So we've been trying since 2009 to work on this case. It's not my desire to be here on such a simple matter and spend your time here, but I think that we are to the end where we say, was a permit applied for or not? And to me, clearly, the answer is no.
Dave?
Let's try another question. This is not, not really in play today, but it does seem to be part of the behavior that's going on out there. In the buffer area, there's apparently a lot of landscaping that was not put in in the first place, and I understand that in the staff report that a lot of the water lines were cut up or beat up or whatever, and there's a $400,000 performance bond. Where is that going to go at this point? Is that going to go anywhere?
The issue that we are trying to resolve with the homeowners' association is a separate issue than the appeal in front of us, but we are continually to work with them to say that you need to, you know, you need to adhere to what you agreed to, or we won't return the bond, so.
How many years are you going to wait?
We're about to the end, right?
All right. My question, and this is generically to the planning staff. Obviously, we have three things we can do here on this particular item. We can either uphold the appeal, which creates certain issues. We can deny the appeal, which creates other issues, or we can continue this specific appeal to a date certain. And this is where I'm coming from. I know it's been four years in the process, and I get all of that. But at the same time, there are significant issues, and I appreciate county council's representation on that, of conflict of the process and conflict of statutes here. I sense a reasonableness by the appellant to try and make this right. And again, we here accept all testimony as appropriately truthful. So it's more to me what should have been done, even though there's a representation on Lot Three, the proper way of doing it, and the community manager can appreciate this, is it should have come through the HOA in that process, and that was properly brought to the county, the proper modifications were done, multiple levels. And as the director has said, over time, people forget that that's the way to do things. So my question to staff, and since the director's already represented, we'd like to resolve this without the heavy hammer of doing things. Does staff feel that they are comfortable, if we gave direction on resolving this? Or are we at the point where we have to be Solomon and divide the child? Because we are, I'm in conflict with a lot of things up here. So if I go one way or the other, denial or an upholding, it's going to create other issues. So a little direction before I deliberate, as far as what would the county staff like to do? Or do you need a few moments to think about that one?
Is what you're proposing, that we would enter into some sort of a compliance agreement by saying that you need to file the HOA, and individual property owner needs to file for the appropriate modification of the SEQA document, and that we would stay any enforcement actions until that was done?
Yes.
Well, wouldn't we have to rule first, one way or another? Wouldn't we have to rule on the appeal, period? I mean, I would think you'd rule on the appeal and place enforcement in advance if that's the will of the majority here.
Well, that's the direction, that's what I'm trying to get, the direction is what we would do. Because if we uphold the appeal, staff has got to appeal this to the board. I mean, because of the laws that are involved here. If we deny the appeal, but again, it's what we're looking for is compliance, and within that decision, we could give direction to, that would enforce. Again, I feel like I'm in a very precedent-setting situation here, but also, the issue is what we want as far as the county is compliance.
Well, I'm also concerned, we've got, what, 18 other lots and people involved?
Well, I think, I want to discuss that when we get to the other two cases. This one has the specific, unique situation with the Solar Act, and that creates a question in my mind. So does everybody want to think about it for a few minutes? I'd be more, and we'll only take about a five-minute break.
I'd like you to take a five-minute break.
Let's take a five-minute break, because I see a lot of questions and a lot of i's around here. Let's reconvene at five. Okay, we'll reconvene the county planning commission. I had to ask a question of staff. Any follow-up, or want to lateral the ball?
I would say, from my perspective, I would prefer the vote, you know, and if the vote was that yes, a violation exists because they didn't, they didn't obtain or apply for the permit to be either approved or denied, right, that there is a process. At that point, we would do as we do for all of our other customers, we enter into a compliance agreement, we give them deadlines, in 30 days, you need to have the application filed, we stay any sort of civil administrative penalties or enforcement actions, and we work with them because we have a confirmed violation. So, you know, it's not that we would go out there and say, you need to take that down, it's that we would set some milestones about, you know, getting to where we need to get in the SEQA process.
Okay. Can the council have anything added to that, or are we good to go?
Nothing added, thank you.
All right. Anything else from the public or the staff at this time, commissioners? Hearing none, then I will close the public hearing, and gentlemen, deliberation. Paul?
Well, I think the idea that somehow this solar law would supersede a mitigating negative declaration, as county council said, is not the case. And in reality, you know, there's been no permit processed, so I think that's really where it boils down to, right there.
Rick?
As I read the staff report, it seemed fairly clear how they came to the decision they came to. In reading the appellant's documents submitted, and the arguments that were raised, I got the impression that we're trying to put the cart in front of the horse. I mean, I'm not an attorney like my esteemed commissioners are here. However, I have, I have been, I'm familiar with HOAs and CCNRs, I've sat on a board, I've owned property governed by CCNRs. And as a property owner, I mean, that's something that's part of the sale process slash escrow process, I get a copy, I know what my property is and what the restrictions are on it. Learning, participating as a board member, I certainly became aware of duties and responsibilities of HOAs, and in particular, directors, fiduciary responsibilities that come with that. I mean, that's the reason why I think HOAs have liability insurance to cover itself as well as the directors. So I'm a little troubled by the fact that's represented that the applicant, at least one of the applicants on this property we're talking about is in fact a member of the HOA, and therefore, should be familiar with the CCNRs. The only thing, other thing that troubles me is the fact that the representation was made, that the permit wasn't formally applied for by the property owner, but rather, the And I don't know, there's no representation here as to what, if any information at all the property owner might have known about the restrictions on the CCNRs out there, or whether or not, in fact, that same contractor had installed other panels out there in the process. But I think this is, there are a whole slew of problems out there. It may have occurred to me that, as we got into the issues of maintaining the open space and irrigation, as Paul mentioned, that the HOA slash developer and/or both are negligent in their duties and responsibilities, and so it appears that something is going on in that vein, and I guess we'll hear a little bit more about it in the next issues we're about to hear, but I'm prepared to vote today.
Okay. Commissioner Ransoh.
I share the council's opinion regarding the preemption, and we've had an admission of a violation, and as far as that goes, it's over for me, right there. But we have a larger problem, as we'll get into, I guess, more, and I would encourage staff to enter into some kind of compliance agreement that is reasonable. And I'll also point out that I understand and appreciate why this landscaping situation is where it is, it's a question of money and dollars. And people, these are hard times, even for people in upper socioeconomic groups. But as far as I'm concerned, and I understand there's a problem with this performance bond, but there's no problem with the obligation of the homeowners' association to follow up on their obligations pursuant to the negative declaration, and their obligations maintain landscaping. And I would invite the county of Ventura, if they don't participate, to commence enforcement proceedings against the homeowners' association and the individual homeowners in total to solve the problem. But as to this particular issue, I'm prepared to vote, yes, there was a violation, and follow staff recommendation.
I support what my commissioners are saying here, but having dealt with several of these particular situations over the years, is I understand how we got here, the human nature of it all, the sometimes not understanding what an HO really, a really is to the individual property owner, particularly if they're new to the process. I also really appreciate the confusion over the conflict of statutes. This is not the first time I've dealt with it. So it appears to the individual that it's a catch-22 situation, can't get there, I can't get there. However, the county staff is obligated by law, either whether on the SEQA or the county non-closeted zoning ordinance, to enforce what has been agreed to in the restrictions. It is not their place to make determinations between state statutes and/or local zoning ordinances, their responsibility is to apply them. However, that's why the appeal process, and that's why we're here, and I think it's brought to light some of the, and I'm going to label, put the word confusion. People that own these property, they're not land use attorneys. At the same time, however, an HOA exists, and HOA has been given authority to enforce things. And again, not going to go after the property manager, because I've sat in those meetings and saw what happens to you poor guys. But I clearly go back to Lot Three. The process was followed, the county cooperated, worked with it, and adjustment was made, given to the uniqueness of a situation. My direction, obviously, since we discussed it, so I'll just leave, I won't even use this direction, we're looking for some kind of compliance. And I think it goes back to dealing with the architectural committee, dealing with the HOA board, then bringing it forward, permitting process. I think the appellant hears the fact that the county would cooperate with them and let the process work. What we have here is whether or not the commission should enforce the process. And I appreciate somebody comes to a counter and they're told no. The solar contractor, again, is not a land use attorney. And community property manager now has excellent attorney, so I think they can work through the details of how they deal with the homeowners. So that's my gut feeling, and I appreciate how you got here, Ms. Johnson, I really do. I totally understand that. Related up here, I had a case a while back where somebody was concerned about somebody building into an open space in Seabee Valley, and then when the city inspector came out, they found out the person who complained had built their block wall, expensive block wall, six feet into the city's right away of the street. So there ensued this type of situations. So with that, I will request a motion, unless there's any further deliberation.
I'll move staff recommendation.
I have a move of the staff recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second?
Well, no, we're still in deliberation. Okay. But you have to go to on the floor.
Do this.
I'll be on the floor.
I'm working on it.
You're working on, you're working on. All right, I hit the motion. These old cow linebackers that got broken fingers, they don't work no of his buttons. Just click on motion. There you go. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those vote for or against?
Now, wait a minute. The motion is to...
Deny the appeal, the staff recommendation.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's a yes vote.
Correct.
Yes.
I hope the motion maker will say yes. The appeal is denied, and 4-0, and I appreciate it was well-thought-out exhibits that you presented, Ms. Weissman, and I, again, as I said, we understand the situation, but however, we have to support the process. All right, we are upon the...
Wait a second.
Here.
Don't go away. We're not through today.
No, we're not, but we're about to shake, roll, and roll here in about eight minutes, so if you're in the building, you have to stay, if you're not in the building, run away. All right, let's take a break until 20... And you do it well before nightfall, so you don't get some visitors.
It's still hot, then you've got to get it out.
Yeah, but also you get critter. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. We survived the drill, so we are now on to our next agenda item. Glad to see everybody made it back. Item number seven, PL 13-0064, and Ms. Rosengrin?
Yes.
If you would, please.
Thank you, Chair Westner, and fellow planning commissioners. On to the next item. The next item is appeal number PL 13-0064. It's an appeal of a notice of violation. The appellant is Patrick Liebrecht. The project address is 13648 Pacific Breese. The project address is 13648 Pacific Breeze Drive in Camarillo. The appellant's property is located on lot 20 within the Santa Rosa Highlands subdivision. The lot size is approximately 1.2 acres and the building envelope is approximately half an acre. The property is divided up into sections. The building envelope and anything outside of the building envelope is considered designated open space. And within that designated open space, there's a landscape buffer area and an area to preserve the native habitat. There's also a area for privately maintained landscaping to the west of the building envelope. The appellant is appealing the planning division's issuance of a notice of violation PV 13-0007 for the alteration of existing approved landscaping plan, installation of non-native landscaping, and construction of stairs within designated open space area in tract 5175. Here is a picture looking north from Santa Rosa Road. It is a zoomed in picture to show the area, the vineyards and the stairways on the, on either side of the vineyard. This is a zoomed out photo showing the rest of the area, including the native habitat. The appellant's grounds of appeal number one, county's right to enforce landscaping mitigation measures against individual homeowner's lot, not common area. As explained earlier, the board of supervisors adopted specific mitigation measures for the development of the Santa Rosa Highlands. And these conditions are applicable to the common open space areas and those areas that are designated as open space within each individual lot. Additionally, any and all proposed changes to the area outside of the building envelope of each lot must be reviewed and approved by the planning division. Within the appellant's lot directly beyond the building envelope, there is an area designated for landscaping. Pursuant to the conditions and mitigation measures of this tract, a landscaping plan was approved. This landscaping consists of wild lilac, yucca, prickly pear, California sycamore, which are native and drought tolerant species, also includes ground cover, wild strawberry. This landscaping is considered a buffer area between the native habitat and the developed area within the building envelope. Here is an aerial view of the appellant's lot. The building envelope is outlined by the red and outside of that building envelope, you'll see the vineyards and the construction of stairs. This area beyond the building envelope is not intended to be used as a backyard. It's a landscape buffer area, which is required to have a plant palette that is compatible with and consistent with the existing native habitat within that area. Just want to remind you that these are steep slopes too. The appellant's grounds of appeal number two, applicability of mitigation measures to open space area not maintained by the homeowners association. The lack of maintenance by the HOA does not nullify the mitigation measures that were applied to the identified habitat areas throughout the tract. Although the HOA may not have been maintaining this area, it does not provide the opportunity for each individual property owner to revise this area and install whatever landscaping they would like. In this case, the appellant moved his fence well beyond the 12-foot limit within the designated open space area, which made it difficult for the HOA to continue to maintain the landscaping in this area. The appellant's grounds of appeal number three, exclusive jurisdiction of HOA to permit landscaping modifications upon individual lots. Again, the county's required to approve any and all proposed changes to the approved landscaping plans and to any permit conditions and CCNRs and deed restrictions within the tract. The HOA does not have exclusive jurisdiction. Appellant's grounds of appeal number four, extreme fire danger and life safety issue associated with flammable coastal sage brush abutting dwellings. This is again a map of, or the plan of the appellant's landscaping and there, it consists again of wild lilac, yucca, native vegetation and drought tolerant species, which does not consist of the coastal sage scrub abutting directly against the appellant's house. This landscaping strip is approximately 50 feet.
Ms. Rosengren, there's a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Yes.
And maybe you spoke in air previously. You identified this originally, this is lot number 20. I see in your slide, it says lot number 19. When you verbally described the property, I thought you said lot number 20. I think lot number 20, we just had-
It's lot 19, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. It is lot 19.
Mr. Chair, can I sneak another question in here?
Certainly, please.
That 12-foot fence, as I understand it, some folks wanted to do that, move their fence line out 12 feet so I guess it would go downhill so they wouldn't have to look at the fence. In that 12 feet of space, the designation of that being in the buffer zone did not change, is that correct?
Exactly.
It just, the fence moved.
You're right, you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosengren.
So here, I'm just trying to show that the coastal sage scrub is not abutting the appellant's The planning division does agree that there is a legitimate concern regarding fire safety on the appellant's lot and that the HOA, due to the HOA severing and not replacing the irrigation lines along the slope, which caused weeds to grow in place of the required landscaping. Since this issue has been brought to our attention, we have met with the HOA to, we've urged them to apply for a fuel modification plan with the fire department on a number of occasions. And this fuel modification plan would protect structures by reducing the exposure of combustible To date, this fuel plan, modification plan, has not been submitted as well as any modifications for alternative landscaping within this area by individual homeowners. The appellant's grounds of appeal number five, exclusive jurisdiction of HOA to maintain landscaping in open space areas. Again, as I stated previously, the HOA is responsible for maintaining the common open space areas and those areas designated as open space within each individual lot. However, the appellant improperly moved the fence beyond the 12-foot line limit within the designated open space area, which made it difficult for the HOA to continue maintaining this area. And the responsibility for maintaining the landscaping, who has a responsibility, really is not related to the appellant's violations today, before you today. The planning division provided public notice of this hearing in the Ventura County Star. We mailed notice to property owners within 300-foot radius of the project and we posted it to the planning division website. The appellant's recommended actions are to overturn the planning division's determination that there exists a violation of the conditions of the tract and to instruct staff that the landscaping is outside the jurisdiction of the county planning division and within the jurisdiction of the Santa Rosa Highlands Community Association, which is the HOA. Again, I'd like to bring you back to the language of the notice of violation and pose the question, did the appellant alter the existing approved landscaping plan? Did they install non-native landscaping and construct stairs within the designated open space area? Our answer to that is yes. And therefore, our recommended actions are to deny the appeal and to find that the notice of violation is in accordance with the non-c coastal zoning ordinance and uphold the violations described and to designate the planning director as the custodian and location of the recordings of proceedings. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Okay, before we ask questions, I know this is redundant, but I have an attorney over here to my left that's going to jump me if I don't. Any disclosures?
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
My disclosure again remains the same. I drive by this property twice a day.
No disclosures.
Thank you very much. If there's anything from county council at this time, as far as the appeal and the process, similar to what we had last time?
Similar to last time, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything additional from staff in those regards? All right, any questions of county staff at this point? Hearing none? Thank you very much, Ms. Rosengren. Again, I will remind, if anybody would like, I'll revisit the rules that the board of supervisors set down as far as the process. If not, then we will hear from the appellant. Ms. Nishwata?
Thank you. And if I could ask the guys in the booth to give me slide number two. I just showed you moments ago the map, exhibit number eight for lot 20, which is the Johnsons' lot, and compared it to this lot, lot 19. Lot 19 belongs to the appellant, Mr. Liebrich. Matching the two lots up, you can see that knowing what part of your lot to plant and which part to leave alone is pure guesswork. On lot 20, there's 130-foot wide buffer. On this lot, lot 19, the buffer's 50 feet wide. The conditions of approval say Mediterranean species can be planted. There is little more Mediterranean than grapevines. But right now, Mr. Liebrich's been cited by the planning division because of these grapes. Now, why did the appellant plant his grapevines? I tried to explain in the letter that we submitted to your commission that his insurance was canceled on his house and that was not once but twice. The insurance company did not like the brush near his house. First American Insurance canceled and then Chubb Insurance. So he planted the grapes as sort of a last resort. I would refer you to the email from Fire Captain Larry Williams, which we did provide to you in the packet. He's perfectly okay with the grapes that are here in this location because condition 35 in the conditions of approval require a 130-foot, or excuse me, 150-foot buffer from any structure. And clearly, these grapes provide an excellent buffer. Now, the staff report for today admits there's a problem. And on page 12 of the staff report, it says, quote, "There is a legitimate concern regarding fire safety on appellant's lot." Why was there a problem to begin with? Not through anything that Mr. Liebrich did. The Santa Rosa Highlands Homeowners Association was supposed to take certain actions, plant and irrigate certain plants, and they didn't do it. Now, those conditions were imposed on the HOA way back in 1999. There were supposed to be irrigation lines and maintenance of certain plants. It just never happened. The irrigation lines were destroyed almost immediately when grading started on each of the lots. So really, nothing has happened in the past 14 years to revegetate and maintain those areas. Mr. Liebrich's insurance was canceled, so he planted grapevines. The conditions say he can plant Mediterranean species, but apparently these particular Mediterranean species were not on the plant palette. Again, this is not something that your average person purchasing a property can know. Yes, he received the CCNRs when he purchased the house, but we're not talking about him having in his hand the landscape plans. Those landscape plans were not provided to Mr. Liebrich or to the profits. They are big oversized plans that show what the landscaping should be for the lots. And while, yes, there are conditions that talk about restrictions on what you can plant, certainly that reference to Mediterranean species should have provided him some amount of protection against action by the county. Now, we heard from Mr. Rogesengren about the fence on this property. It is very important to note that the county did not cite Mr. Liebrich for a violation of anything concerning the fence that is not in the notice of noncompliance. It's not before you today. We talked about the stairs and yes, the stairs are technically construction outside of the envelope, technically. But really, what you're looking at is some way to get down a steep slope to, for health and safety purposes, I would suggest that this is not a violation. It is just access to that area. What we're asking for today is, as Ms. Rosengren noted, to grant our appeal as to these grapevines. They are consistent with the conditions, even if the grapes are not within the plant palette suggested in the conditions. When the homeowners association finally does what the conditions require and the open space is revegetated and maintained, the plants on the open space will not be harmed by the grapes and the grapes are entirely within the landscape buffer as shown on the map. One of the things I do want to mention is, you see this area here? That's where the grapes end. You can kind of see it underneath the pink that's on exhibit eight, but the grapes are within that landscape buffer area. The fence that she's talking about is actually a little lower than that, but it certainly did not interfere with the HOA's maintenance, which never happened. So whether the fence was there or not really doesn't matter. And in fact, it is not part of the notice of noncompliance. As I mentioned to your commission in the letter that I wrote, that the enforcement of these conditions appears arbitrary at best. Many, many fences are outside the envelope. Much landscaping not on the plant palette is outside the envelope. There are two solar arrays outside the envelope that have been approved by the county. And while the Johnsons and the profits were, they're told they couldn't have a solar array, we can find many other minor construction pieces. I mean, I'm not talking about buildings, but steps and hardscaping and such things outside that building envelope. The conditions haven't been applied fairly. They have not been applied consistently. And what I'm asking for today is just simply your help in upholding the spirit of the conditions. As noted on this map, this, these grapes, Mediterranean species, are within the landscape buffer area and should not be ripped out. To force him to tear out the grapes would, again, likely subject to him to cancellation of his insurance without any benefit to the community or to the county at large. The conditions were imposed to protect the view shed. And I would refer you to condition of approval 15 that talks about the purpose of the landscaping will be to control erosion and mitigate the visual impact of the man-made slopes. Certainly agriculture is consistent with the view shed in the Santa Rosa Valley. And the plants that he has planted are within the ambit of the intent of these conditions, even if the exact species is not listed on the plant palette. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Nishwata? I'm going to ask you just one question and probably you can answer it. Was an application made to the architectural or landscaping committee of the HOA by the appellant?
Landscaping was not required to go, as far as I'm aware. Landscaping is not required to go through an HOA committee. Landscaping is not required to go through an HOA committee.
Okay, thank you. All right, again, the process is that anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the appeal certainly has their opportunities. Once again, I don't see or hear anybody jumping up real quick, so therefore, we will go to those that oppose the appeal. Is there anybody? See somebody rising up?
Can we have her fill out a card?
Yes. I hate to say it, but again, we have, maintaining a record, so please, Sandra.
My name is Sandra Gottlieb, G-O-T-T-L-I-E-B, from the law firm of Swedelson, S-W-E-D-E-L-S-O-N, Gottlieb, G-O-T-T-L-I-E-B, and we are legal counsel to the Homeowners Association. I want to clarify any misconceptions that may have been presented by Mr. Liebrich's counsel when she was referring to the association's obligations for many, many years to comply with the landscaping plan. I want to make certain that the commission understands that there is a great distinction between the developer declarant of the property and the Homeowners Association. The property has not been signed off on as of yet, so it remains the declarant's obligation, the successor declarant in this case, to comply with the plan and any violations that may have existed. The reference to there not having been any landscaping, I think, is an incorrect statement and possibly inadvertent. There was, as I have been told by staff, landscaping of the areas which did die because the irrigation lines were, that were supposedly installed, were broken. This is not something that the association did either. When the planning resulted in the grading of the slopes, we're assuming that either the declarant or any of the merchant builders for those homeowners that built their own properties may have negatively impacted and broken the irrigation lines. I'm not suggesting that there is not a plan that requires compliance. I'm just suggesting that the association was not the entity responsible for all these client compliance issues and is still not in the position to be responsible for the compliance issues because there's not been a final sign-off on the property. We can't say that the association didn't do it, maintain the landscaping, because it wasn't their obligation at that point to do so nor to install the landscaping. As to the contention that moving the fence, which I understand is not before the commission today, down slope, the statement that that did not interfere with the association's ability to maintain the property by the installation of the fence is not a correct statement. That fence, as you can see by one of the diagrams and pictures, was extended down slope past the 12 feet that the Chair of the Commission was referring to earlier, and the association would have no access into that area to take care of that native vegetation in the designated open space area that the fence went through. So I just wanted to clarify for you what the association distinction is from the declarant, what they were responsible for as an entity, a corporate entity, and what it could do during the time, and who was responsible and remains responsible.
Any questions of Ms. Gottlieb? Commissioner?
On the overall issue that we've discussed in the previous appeal and obviously is the issue now, am I to assume the association, the HOA, is moving forward to address these issues and consider or put together some proposed modifications to the CCNRs and the requirements that are placed or restrictions that are placed on these various lots and that would come forward at some future date? Or are we in log gen, in the log gen regarding the HOA's responsibility and developer's responsibility and where it's happening? It sounds to me like the developer put in the irrigation and sometime since then, and then the CCNRs, et cetera, were signed in '02, I think, as I recall, and those maintenance obligations that I read the CCNR has transferred to the HOA, and so here we are. Can you update us in that regard?
As the members of the commission have been told, we are new to representing the association, just three weeks. It would be improper for me to represent that there's any plan currently to request a modification to the plan. I do know, however, that when I met with the Board of Directors, other than the two conflicted board members, that the board composed and is distributing through its managing agent notification to all of the homeowners of the association's intention to comply and require compliance with the governing document provisions, and the owners were given 60 days' notice to get used to the idea and clean themselves up and bring them into compliance. So the board recognizes that even though the issues with the declarant are ongoing and unresolved, that there are certain responsibilities that the association could assume over compliance with its governing documents and, in effect, with the existing landscaping plan while putting together its ideas for a modification of a plan. But it's merely an initial conversation as it relates to the plan, as it relates to enforcement of the governing documents, which addresses your transition issue between the declarant and the association. That is in play. I can represent that that is in play.
Thank you. Steve?
Is it your representation that the Homeowners Association has sent out letters to the individual property owners advising them that they need to comply with the existing conditions? What was sent to them?
Hold on one second.
Well, if he needs to testify, have him come up.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
William Witt, Jr., 2323 Portola Road, Suite 150, Ventura, California 93003. I'm the owner of A&amp;S Realty, Inc.
Your questions, Commissioner?
My specific question is, have the property owners within the tract been notified that the Homeowners Association is pursuing remedying these, the conditions? Or, well, let me put it this way. Has formal notice been given to the property owners of the problems with compliance with the CCNRs and deed restrictions?
Letter has been drafted.
Has or hasn't?
The letter has been drafted, approved through the current board at a executive session and was approved through Sandra Gottlieb, and that will be, notice will be sent out to all homeowners. It has not been sent as of date. We've just completed the letter itself.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions? Anything else you would like to say?
No, sir.
An advice of counsel, I wouldn't. Sorry, Ms. Gottlieb, I didn't mean to interfere. Anything else for Ms. Gottlieb? Again, thank you for your testimony. I certainly appreciate your representation. Are there any others that oppose the appeal? Seeing or hearing none? Ms. Weissman, you're up again.
When I first got involved with this case a couple months ago, I went to sit down with Winston Wright of the Planning Division, sat at the counter with him and a lady named Lynn Johnson. Lynn drafted the landscape plans for this project a long time ago, back in 1999. She's been actively involved in these plans for a long time, and so she brought the landscape paint plans to the counter, and we sat down with Mr. Wright, and we said, okay, how do we fix this? How do we make this better? And I said, we'll apply for a modification, meaning Liebrich and Profit will apply for modifications to their lots to solve this problem. And after much discussion and hemming and hawing, we discovered that the fire department had never approved the plant pallet for this subdivision. So the fire department, which was supposed to be involved in the process, had never actually approved the plant pallet. And I said, well, let's modify the plant pallet so that it matches the condition of approval where it says Mediterranean species. Then we can keep the grapes. And again, after much discussion back and forth, it was determined by the Planning Division that we, Liebrich and Profit, could not apply for a modification without the entire HOA coming to the table and applying for modification at the same time. Essentially, they said, you can't just fix your lot, you're going to have to fix the entire 23-lot subdivision. That holds my clients hostage to a certain extent. We're willing to do whatever it takes to make this right, but they want to keep the grapes. So we'll apply for a modification, we'll take over the revegetation of the designated open space area. That was one of the things we said. Well, you know, the HOA is doing it, not doing it. We'll do it. We're totally okay with that. And we were told, no, that that's not how it's done. And so I come to you today, to a certain extent, to say, talk about catch-22s, we'll do what it takes. You just tell us what you want us to do, and we'll do it. But we can't be held hostage by an HOA, which until two weeks ago was telling us that they were our strongest supporters, and it's now apparently changed its collective mind. So just tell us what you'd like us to do. We'll do it. We just want to keep the grapes. Thank you.
Just a minute, Kate. Any questions? Just, since you brought it up, you sat and discussed it. This is coming out of left field, so if you don't have an answer, I appreciate it. When you went over the landscaping, was the point that since these are grapes, whether or not the Agriculture Commissioner was needed to be involved? Is that brought up?
No, no, not at all. The question was, well, the conditions of approval, Condition 15, talks about a specific plant pallet.
Right.
That's the plant pallet that Lynn Johnson drew up that I believe Ms. Rosengren was talking about. In Condition Eight, which is a different condition, it talks about planting Mediterranean species. And so that's why, to a certain extent, we thought that these grapes would fit in the visual character of the area and be beneficial. And again, the grapes are entirely within the landscape buffer on Mr. Liebrich's lot. They're not slopping over into the open space. But he has told anyone who will listen to him that if you want him to go back into the designated open space area and re-veg that and take care of it in order to keep his grapes, he will do that regardless of what the HOA does or doesn't do. I mean, these people are willing to do what's necessary, but they're being hamstrung by this problem, longstanding problem with the HOA.
No, no, I get that. That's why I brought it up, because I think that adds another level of confusion, because to me, once you introduce grapes, that's an ag property that I have because of 20 years up here. I know it's a very sensitive issue to the ag commissioner because of a lot of different reasons, and I see the issue because you have a biological resources mitigation, which goes to the pallet, which's got Mansonita, and I couldn't see the fire department ever approving that in the fire buffer, but also the fact that what you're referring to is a visual mitigation for Mediterranean species, and I do not see any definition of that other than just the term. So I'm agreeing with you on the confusion, because I'm getting a little confused up here, too. Okay. I just wanted to know if the conversation came up as far as the ag commissioner and the grapes.
So far, not.
Well, the elephant's in the room now, because I tell you, my farmer friend over here just started taking notes. So, all right. Any further questions?
Don't go away.
See, I knew I started something.
No, I don't care about your grapes.
Oh, okay.
An issue has been raised, who's responsible? Is the, it's hard for me to understand, but I guess it may be true, that the developer still is on the hook for what portion of the maintenance or the development of these areas? I know there is a bond. I'm not sure what the bond is for, if not what we're talking about. Could you tell me, where is the responsibility between the developer and the HOA? I'm asking counsel. You can respond. Hang on.
My understanding, and I'll refer to the subdivision conditions upon which I'm relying, but my understanding was that the developer was obligated to initially install the approved landscaping, per the landscaping plan, as well as the irrigation.
And did he?
I'll leave it to staff. I'll just, I'll cite to the subdivision Condition 15E, that's on Page 37 of the staff report, and that requires the landscaping to be installed basically 30 days after grading of the development. And then in terms of maintenance, I looked to the CCNRs for that, and on Page 71 of the staff report, the CCNR is at Section 5.1, and there's also a similar one for landscaping. It's also in Article 5. It has the HOA responsible for maintaining the landscaping in the common areas and the open space areas. And so, big picture, developer had to put it in, get everything started, then the HOA has to maintain and keep it going.
Thank you. Was the landscaping installed?
Let me go ahead and clarify that there, in the designated open space area showing is green on her site plan up there, there was no requirement for any specific landscaping. That was really just supposed to be natural, right? In the pink area, which says landscape buffer area, which is also part of that whole area, there was a specific landscape plan that was approved, and some of the guidance from the conditions of approval said that when they designed that or developed that, it should include Mediterranean species and non-native species. We are under the impression that the landscaping, yes, that it was installed at one point in time, and the irrigation lines, we could see the irrigation lines when we walked the property. At the time when we walked the property, though, in 2009, much of it had been thinned out, much of it was gone, and we understand that's because it wasn't maintained, and so weeds grew up, and the fire department came through and said, we want you to do brush clearance here and take everything out.
Who, in your opinion, has the obligation to maintain the landscape buffer area and the open space?
The HOA.
Thank you.
I would like to add that in 2005, Lynn Johnson submitted a letter to the Planning Division stating that the landscaping, the required landscaping, had been installed substantially in compliance with the approved landscaping plan.
Okay. Kate, I don't think I need you. That got my answer, unless you don't agree with it.
I just refer you to the thing that Ms. Rosengren prepared, which is in the letter. It's attached to my letter, and it specifically outlines which of the HOA responsibilities, which of the developer responsibilities, so it gives you a good summary.
Thank you.
My last question, then, Kate, is that, getting back to the fire policy, insurance policy, Captain Williams noted to the fire department that they did not review the plant pallet that is recommended, and because of that created a conflict which wound up resulting in the denial of fire insurance? Am I making any sense to you?
Yes.
In other words, if they were to enforce the appropriate plant pallet, it would create a fire hazard, which then their insurance would not have.
That is my understanding, although I don't think that email directly says that.
Okay.
I mean, he skirts that issue. And he also very clearly says that he doesn't want to get in the fight in between conditions and the homeowners, but he would like to see something different happen out there for fire protection purposes.
I understand. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Paul.
Can we get a clarification on this, what the fire department is saying, and if the pallet was ever really approved and the fire department signed off on it? Did that actually happen initially?
Staff?
At the time, then, when we're talking 10 years ago, the fire department didn't have a role in that. There isn't, there wasn't a role for the fire department to approve landscaping plans. So the fire department put their condition on it that said you had to have a buffer, right? And then the landscape architect came in and did the plant pallet, right? So that plant pallet is a native vegetation plant pallet. Well, over in the intervening 10 years, the fire department has kind of ramped up what they would or wouldn't like in that pallet, so which is why we've said in numerous meetings, it says, why don't we meet with the fire department and establish a fuel modification plan, what the fire department would like to see there? So clearly, there's an email from Mr. Williams that said, sure, fire department doesn't mind grapes, right? But they also, if you finish reading that, they said, but everything that you do needs to be in conformance with all of the other plans that you have. Grapes are not, you know, when Kate says nothing is more Mediterranean than grapes, that's not true, right? It has a planting pallet. There isn't any guesswork. Pure guesswork is not what's happening here. We have an approved landscaping plan, an approved planting pallet, and an approved building envelopes. None of those things were followed.
Any further questions?
What is to prevent the property owner from taking care of the landscaping? He owns the property. I understand there's an overlay, and if the Homeowners Association isn't isn't doing their job, what's to prevent him from complying? I don't think there's anything to stop him, he doesn't need a buy-your-leave from anybody, does he?
So is your question, does the property owner...
Have the ability to...
Have the ability to maintain landscaping?
Yes.
They have the ability to maintain landscaping to the approved...
I agree.
To the approved plan, right?
I mean, subject to the conditions, is there anything to prevent the property owner from carrying out the duties of the Homeowners Association?
No, they can, they could maintain it to the approved plan, and apparently if their fences move down, which, and I do want to say that is not part of the violation, and it's not part of the violation because it seems to me, when we do that, it's just kind of this add-on, oh, now we saw a fence, we're going to issue a new violation, and then you'll have to pay another $2,000 to appeal that. So we know the fence is out there, we're hoping they'll do the right thing by following the conditions, but no, we didn't add that on to the notice of violation. And it would be problematic for the Homeowners Association to maintain what is inside the fence when the fence clearly isn't at the 12-foot mark.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, the staff? I hate, sorry about bringing up the Ag Commissioner, but I'm very sensitive to the grape issue, having dealt with it in Selma personally.
I would like to make some comments.
Shirley, please.
Okay. Ms. Nieswinder made a statement that in the CCNRs, there was no, or actually, the Architectural Review Board does not have to review landscaping plans. So I was going through Exhibit 5, which is the CCNRs for the tract, and under Section 8.9, Architectural Control, so 8.9F, it states here that no landscaping or other physical improvements or additions shall be made, et cetera, that are visible from the street or from the common area by any owner until plans and specifications showing the nature, kind, shape, and location of the materials have been submitted to and approved in writing by the board or by the architectural committee.
Okay.
So I just wanted to point that out. Also, she, Ms. Nieswinder, said, you know, it's guesswork for the appellant to figure out what needs to be planted in the landscape buffer area, and what needs, where is the designated open space area? The way that the planning division views the site is, anything beyond the building envelope is just out of limits. It's a steep slope, it was supposed to be preserved for native vegetation, it's not the property owner's backyard, meaning it's not intended to be used to, for a grapevine, which is not a passive landscaping, it's agriculture, and it has a lot of pesticide, you know, if you're going to maintain it, you may use pesticides, it may run into the native existing habitat area. So I just wanted to say that there doesn't need to be any guesswork involved, because the limit is the building envelope. The other issue was the mention of Mediterranean species and how vineyards may constitute a Mediterranean species. The Mediterranean species, it was a guideline for the landscape architect to go with. Once they developed the landscape plans and they were approved, that's what they had to go with for the tract. Now, it's not, let's, we can put in any Mediterranean species we want in that area, it doesn't work that way. The other comment I'd like to make is that the planning, or I'm sorry, the fire prevention, Larry Williams, who works for the Fire Department, mentioned that perfectly okay for vineyards, that may be okay for fires' perspective, but they also have to be in compliance with the planning division, and we have to work together to resolve this. It can't just be okay for one agency and not for another agency, especially for a tract that has pre-existing mitigation measures and a deed restriction. The Architectural Review Committee, essentially the HOA, should have a set of the approved landscaping plans to go off of, and if any of the property owners have any questions about what type of landscaping is allowed, or what they can do, they would need to refer to the HOA. So they have that ability to do that. And I think that is, that's all I have to say.
Any further questions, the staff? Ooh, fingers everywhere, Rick?
I'm also troubled by this issue, and obviously, we've got a memorandum or a copy of an email submitted, transmitted between the appellants and Fire Department, Mr. Williams or Captain Williams. And noting on the last paragraph specifically, he states that in regards to your property located at 13660 Pacific Breeze Drive, the Fire District does not object to planting of vineyards. If such use meets the Fire State regulations indicated above, however, such use may also be regulated and/or restricted by County HRA. Yeah, that, I guess what I'm troubled by the fact is, it's, and County Planning got CC to copy this, I'm troubled by the fact that there's never been any direct communication between Fire and Planning regarding, other than CC, and I don't know if anything has happened since then in regards to communication. I'm troubled by the fact that Fire Department's interjecting themselves in this capacity and with tacit approval of what's out there, when they really aren't familiar with the landscape plan that was approved for the area, other than the fact that there has to be a buffer zone and some requirements. I was also a little confused, it comes up again, but in this particular case, I read the CCNRs, I'm somewhat familiar with the setback requirements that Fire has, CCNRs talk about 100-foot setback clearance, and then in some other, sure, another part of it talks about the fact that homes, that I guess are adjacent or culminated to a cul-de-sac or have to have, there's a home irrigation system installed, as well as a requirement of 150-foot setback. And in the text, I don't recall if it was the appellant's documents, or whether it was the staff report, references or makes reference to annual inspections, and in which case the Fire Department has said as much, the clearance has to go back as far as 200 feet. I guess I need some clarification on that, that moving target, if you will. And I don't know if the HOA has the ability to do that, I'm not sure whether you have the ability to do it. Certainly, there's nobody here from Fire that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I'll just comment on the fact that, yeah, the Fire Department has noticed some of the plants in the approved landscaping plan are in conflict with their specific plants that they, that are flammable. And so when we were notified about this, right away, we said that, okay, a fuel modification plan needs to be submitted to the Fire Department, work with them on figuring out what is appropriate, what is appropriate to place in the landscape buffer areas.
Okay, because, I mean, using the term Mediterranean-type, I mean, we could interject olive trees, for example, which can grow pretty significantly out there, and would create much more, would also create a fire situation, and they're also defined as, I think they're defined as, would be defined as Mediterranean-type. And just to comment to staff, since there wasn't a pallet that was approved by the Fire Department when they reviewed this process, is the process changed in some capacity now? Because I also sense, in reading the documents, that the Fire Department now has some sort of a pallet, plant pallet, and they're referencing or updating their pallet based on what LA County's doing. So, and I see nothing but conflict and a moving target, if they're always going to refer to LA County, so I know they're making a change here, and also, I think Fire Department staff, whether it's Williams, and there's nothing here that's been discussed related to Captain Williams' background, expertise, or training to talk and make references to any of this information he's providing us. So I would hope at some point, staff has the ability to confer with Fire and say, you know, this is a problem you're creating, or this is a problem that's been created, you know, let's, how can we avoid this in the future?
We have done that, so I've had a couple of meetings with Masood Araghi, who's the county's fire marshal, and Mr. Williams, to go over not only this case, but other cases as well. Because I didn't want the community to be under some misperception that the Fire Department said that they're fine with grapes, so therefore, you know, grapes are the lay of the land. And the fire marshal was clear that that's not the intent, that's not the way he read Mr. Williams' letter, Mr. Williams also said that that's not what he intended, to saying, he's very familiar that the county has mitigation measures, and we need to work carefully, as we do in the Santa Monica Mountains all the time, to saying, we have to be cognizant of the Fire Department's different setbacks, they're, you know, and they do have different setbacks depending on habitable structures and what area of the county you're in, and they have a lot of different regulations about mosaic clearing, but what they're, what the Fire Department is clear of is they don't require full, you know, denotation of the area in the landscape buffer or in the designated open space, right? That they're used to this, they go out all the time and show people, this is what you need to trim this down to, this is the way that this needs to be the size, and if there are some plants in the planting pallet that was adopted 12 years ago, that the Fire Department is in development of their planting pallet now, right? That's what the fuel modification plan is for, that we can work that out. We're used to working that out with the Fire Department, we do have a close relationship with them.
Thank you. Steve, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a question, the staff. If this particular appellant chose to carry out, chose to take care of the situation themselves and not rely on the Homeowners Association, I understand that they, according to staff, they would have to submit to the Homeowners Association their planned landscape, and assuming it's in conformance with the conditions, they could go ahead and do it, whether or without, I think, the permission of the Homeowners Association. The question to you is, what are we talking about in terms of, if they were to come in for a modification, how would the county view that? I mean, we have one property owner coming in for a modification of that landscape plan to allow them to put in grapes or something else. Would the county embrace that, or would they say, we have 18 other, 20 other lots we've got to deal with, and we're not going to do that? It would seem to me they would have the right to come in and ask for a modification as to them. And if I were them, I'd do that, and then I'd go ahead and take care of the thing myself, knowing that if the Homeowners Association ever does anything, you're going to have to pay your pro-rated share of it anyway. How would you, how would you view an application by this homeowner to come in and take care of the matter themselves? Seeking a modification, get it, don't get it, and then handling the matter themselves?
The issue of the visual impacts, I think, are going to be difficult on a lot-by-lot basis, because it's really the cumulative impact of what that facing slope looks like to an eligible scenic road, which is Santa Rosa Road. So you tell the citizens of Santa Rosa Road and of Santa Rosa Valley and the board, it's going to be all native, right? Don't worry about it, it's going to look native, it's going to look nice, and then all of a sudden, two lots, right, are going to be vineyards, which are not native, right? And so I think that that's going to be difficult, given the mitigation measure, the visual mitigation measure that says it's going to look native, so, right? So I think that, you know, a replacement mitigation measure requires a public hearing, and how are you going to do a replacement mitigation measure for a natural vegetated slope, right? So we'd have to struggle with that, we would have to, we'd have to work that out, we'd have to see what it is that they're going to submit, and how that would be for two lots, or whether we would ask the association to come in and say, that really needs to be looked at on a more holistic level, right?
Well, it seems to me that the hammer needs to fall on the Homeowners Association. How many years have you been dealing with them?
We've been dealing with them for some time, but however, the Homeowners Association has the benefit of having an approved landscaping plan, and perhaps the Homeowners Association would say, we're happy with the plan, we don't want any grapes either, right? So...
Okay, but technically, just about everybody's out of compliance, right? Now...
Well, see, that is something that I don't know, that everybody's out of compliance, right? That's something that I have just heard today, that we should apply the conditions fairly and consistently, you know, but we didn't do, somebody issues us a complaint, we don't do a sweep of the neighborhood and go out there with our measuring tape to see who's 10-foot out, or who planted a palm tree, right? We're looking at the violation case in front of us, but then we're also looking at the failure to enforce the mitigation with the Homeowners Association and the developer. So we have the developer, the Homeowners Association, and these three individual property owners, kind of all in play. So, I mean, and we're trying to really be careful about separating the issues out with each one of them.
Well, I want an endgame for them.
I'd like an endgame for them, too.
The only way I know they can do that is to take charge themselves and take care of the problem. Either landscape it to the existing plan and move on and take the grapes out, or come in for a modification and see what you do with it or don't do it, depending on how you feel about everything else. It doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of middle ground anywhere. Otherwise, they are in a catch-22.
Okay.
It's clear there, to me, that they're in a violation, so there is a technical violation. They've admitted they planted the grapes, the grapes aren't called for, so they're in a violation. So we find them, and so we vote, assuming we vote and find them in violation, then what do we do next? Do we force them to remove it? Do we sit back and place that in a variance pending, hopefully, the Homeowners Association comes around? Or do we commence a proceeding against the Homeowners Association?
I think it could be a combination of both, but what I would like to see happen is, you know, if the violations stand, it's easier to enter into a compliance agreement, saying, no, we're not going to immediately make you take those grapes down, but within 30 days, somebody has to agree to file the appropriate application to make that happen. And whether they get a decision for that or against that, at least they filed the application. So I think the compliance agreement is to say, we're willing to work with you, we're willing to allow you to file the application, we're willing to not to stay all enforcement actions, no civil administrative penalties, but we want some action.
Well, I understand that as it pertains to this particular appellant, I don't know that the Homeowners Association is not properly before us in any kind of enforcement proceeding. So it would seem to me that if we do that and place it matter in a variance pending somebody filing something, that we need to commence something, or put the Homeowners Association on notice, that the hammer's going to fall. And I'd be very much in favor of that, because otherwise, these individual homeowners are just hung out to dry. That's it.
Okay. I see Ms. Gottlieb standing up, so the public hearing's still open? And Nieswinder, you'll be allowed to rebut if you feel necessary.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear, so that when you're all making your decisions, you have all of the actual information in front of you. The homeowner owns the property, but the association, still the declarant to be the association, has the maintenance responsibility. So in response to the statement that the owner could go forward and take care of this property themselves, even if the association didn't do anything, there's actually no authority in the governing documents to do that, other than in a variance section where the association could enter into a covenant, a recorded document with the homeowner, to take on that responsibility, including indemnifying the association if they fail to do so. But the association's been grappling with the exercise of its rights when the declarant is still responsible for the planting. I understand that staff has indicated that the original planting was completed by the declarant. The association's board is not taking that position and is still investigating that. Clearly, after meeting staff today, we will be opening dialogue to try and move that along, but I just wanted to make sure we understood what the owner could do without the declarant or association's involvement.
I hear what you're saying, but that only reinforces my position that the planning commission should commence enforcement proceeding against your association.
Well, you can make that recommendation, and the association and staff would determine what the association's response would be, since the declarant has not been signed out of this property, and there are its obligations to complete the project. They still have, they haven't finished, the entrance to the association is not completed, there's no sign-off for it. So even though this thing has been going on since 2002, they're still being held accountable, and there's discourse that's going on, the association is also limited by the terms of the governing documents as to what it can do until the declarant is out of the picture. So it is very confusing for everybody. I'm happy to hear that staff is engaging in that communication with them, and hopefully they can meet their obligations, the association, so the association can step in and do these things that you are suggesting.
So your representation, then, is the declarant is still in control of the board?
The declarant is not in control of the board, the declarant, the city, the county has not signed off on the property, they still have bond... has not signed off on the property, they still have bonds that are in play that go to the conformance of the declarant's obligations to the association. I don't know the status of the front entry area or gate, I'm assuming that staff does. I don't want to put words in your mouth, maybe you do, maybe you, you don't, but yes, there are certain things that they are still responsible for as it relates to maintenance.
So the homeowners have taken responsibility for the board, but the declarant has obligations to the county? I'm trying to get clarity here.
To the county and therefore to the association. The association now, with my assistance, is figuring out what accountability the declarant has to the association for putting everybody in this particular position. I have to see whether there was or is not compliance with that original planting, to see whether they actually complied with, complied with the planning, county plan.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms.?
Well, my understanding is, is that the original pallet planting and the irrigation was put in by the developer, is that correct?
Staff has maintained that it was, that there was planting and irrigation that was installed, and I have been told that as well.
So at that point, why didn't the HOA take over that maintenance of that property at that point?
So the declarant did the installation within the set period from, I don't know if it was 30 days, as may have been referenced, but immediately thereafter, when the declarant was grading the property, the irrigation lines were broken. So they complied with the original plan, then they destroyed what they were supposed to do, and the association is saying, wait, you destroyed, you destroyed that when you were developing this community, we want you to put it back in again so that we can take over from the point where it was supposed to be.
So you would have all the irrigation put back in, and all the planting that died or whatever, put back in, is that...
I don't think it's going to be possible to put the irrigation back in, in this developed property, but I am not a landscape architect or an engineer, but I do think that planting in native vegetative state can be put in.
Thank you. Well, that goes back to if the HOA has accepted the common area, but that's a legal point, we're not going to go. Did you have anything else, Ms. Gottlieb? You don't have to. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Sam, appreciate it. Any rebuttal?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, you were talking about, okay. Staff?
I just had one thing to add, and that is that in working with the representative for the three property owners, we've spoken to them about what would be required to abate the violations on their property, and what we provided them, to them as an option was for them to remove the plantings that didn't comply with the landscape plan, and we did not, and to plant, you see how there's a yellow area at the top of this particular site plan that says privately maintained landscaping? That's the only area that's actually the responsibility of the homeowner, and it, it varies a little bit from lot to lot, but that's the area that they're responsible for. And so what we told them was, in order to abate the violations and for us to remove the, the notice of violation, if they were to plant as it shows on the plan for that privately maintained landscaping area, and remove the items that were not allowed, we would not require them to replant everything where it says landscape buffer area, because that is the responsibility of the HOA. So we were not, you know, the, the ability to abate the violation for the property owners was, was a simple matter of removing the items that were not allowed and planting in that privately landscaped maintained area what was required.
Okay. Thank you. Anything additional from staff? Rick?
All right. I have a question, Staff. What leverage, if, or does leverage exist to encourage the developer to write this deficiency? I.e., you know...
The developer or the HOA?
The developer.
The original developer? We do have, we do have a landscape bond that we have not exonerated, and that's what we've been using to try and work with the developer since 2009 to, to address the issues that are still remaining that we believe are the developer's responsibility, but that really is limited to that front entryway where there were some non-native plantings installed, and then also some of the landscape screening that was supposed to happen behind Lot 1, between Lot 1 and Sunny Lane in the Bridlewood Development next door. So we are not, as far as, as far as our work with the developer, we're, we've only been holding that bond because those issues haven't been addressed, and they indicated to us that they were going to submit a modification to the landscape plan to change that front entryway, and so we've been, we've been awaiting that.
Is there a particular drop dead date on that? You know, 60 days, 120 days? Otherwise, we go to step two?
Right. Well, we've, we've attempted to do that, yes. But we, we also have been working with the bondholder, and so that is what was applying a little bit of leverage towards this. But we're, we're not in a situation where we have as much leverage as we'd like as far as being able to pull that bond.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, Staff? Now that everything's as clear as mud, I feel like I'm in the Abbott-Costello who's on first right now. I don't know, third base. Trying to, a little levy here. Very low, thank you, very, very... Yeah. Just because my Bruins beaters bears, he's upset. Any, anything else from the public before I close the public hearing? Everybody give me a for. All right, ladies and gentlemen, at this point in time, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, deliberation? Okay.
I think once again, there's no question that they're in violation, and I would probably move to uphold the staff recommendation. And I'd also move to enter into a compliance agreement to hold enforcement in abeyance for a reasonable period of time, and I'd also direct staff to commence enforcement proceedings against the homeowners association. That's the long and the short of it.
All right, I have a motion, so we go on the floor. Madam Clerk, do you need that typed out? This is one of the little confusing things, because we're going beyond the recommended action.
The staff recommended action?
He's recommended staff, but with the additional information of enforcement against the homeowners association, and that compliance be held in abeyance...
Within the discretion of the planning director pending the outcome of the homeowners association.
Okay. Do you ever get the, okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I have my motion and a second, so you got to, there you go. The button on the left.
What button?
On your finger.
Great box.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor, you've heard the motion before we vote, is there any further discussion on that? I know the chair does, but I don't want to, all right. I'm in agreement with it, but before I move ahead, you know, you guys are caught between a rock and a hard place, and I appreciate that, and part of that is a byproduct of what's happened over the last decade. Properties being built, declarants signing off on conditions, recordations, and deed restrictions, and then the declarant goes bankrupt, disappears, they tear up the landscaping, you put in landscaping according to the pallet for the visual, but not the biological, fire comes up with, oh, no, you can't put manzanilla in there, because we all know that burns really well when it gets to dry. So, yeah, you're caught in the catch-22. And you have an HOA that's there, but it's really not there, nothing against Mr. Witt, I'm totally empathetic to your position, you have brand-new counsel that sounds, needs to advise it, but powers have been given to three different levels. And even on our own level, we got a fire department that's giving us a moving target as far as what's appropriate, and doesn't fit the landscape pallet that was approved 14 years ago. So I think the direction that the motion gives is there, and unfortunately, the county isn't in the compliance mode, and now that Ms. Gottlieb is here at the table, and the appellants are well represented, I think the moving forward and the compliance is everybody come to the table. However, I agree with my commission, associate over here, the pressure has to come down on the people that really have the authority, and that's the HA. They're the ones that are in the acceptance mode from the declarant, they're the ones in privy to the contract with it and represent the homeowners, and I think it's, we've just unfortunately gotten to that point in time. The county has to be empowered to enforce what they have to enforce, but at the same time, the real party here is that the HOA's got to move and get compliance out of the declarant. So with all that said, are we ready to vote? All those involved are by aye, those who say no? No? Okay. The appeal is denied for o, but I think sufficient direction has been given. So with that, we'll take a five-minute break before we prepare for the... All right, the Madam Clerk has told me that we are back on the record. I see all the parties in place. Not to be repetitive, but here we go, this is, let me get the right one up here. This is the appeal, PL 13-0073, Michelle and Gary Prophet, and Ms. Rosengarten, you're up again.
Thank you, Chair Westner, and fellow planning commissioners.
A minute.
This appeal is very similar to the last appeal that you just heard, so I apologize if you're seeing some of the same type of slides, so... The next appeal is appeal number PL 13-0073, the appellant is Gary and Michelle Prophet, the project address is 13660 Pacific Breeze Drive in Camarillo. The appellant's property is located on Lot 19, I'm sorry, Lot 18. The lot size is 1.47 acres, and the building envelope size is approximately 0.42 acres, approximately an acre and a half. The property is divided into specific areas, there's the building envelope, and anything outside of the building envelope, again, is divided up into the landscape area and the designated open space area for native habitat preservation. On the eastern side of the building envelope, there is an area that must be maintained by the property owner, as well as a thin sliver on the western side. The appellants are appealing the issuance of a notice of violation by the planning division, PV 13-0006, for the alteration of existing approved landscaping plan within the designated open space area of tract 5175. Here is a picture of the southwest area of the appellant's lot, you can see some fruit trees there, and just beyond the fence is native landscaping. This is taken from Santa Rosa Road looking north. The appellant's grounds of appeal number one, conditions not applicable to completed work. Again, the Board of Supervisors in 1999 approved this subdivision and adopted specific mitigation measures, which are applicable to the common space areas and also to the appellant's lot. Any completed work and proposed plantings, plantings beyond the building footprint must comply with the CCNRs and must be approved by the County of Ventura Planning Division. And again, within this area is a deed restriction. Appellant's grounds of appeal number two, plantings in conformance with conditions. As noted before, there was a required landscaping plan and approved landscaping plan for this tract, which is directly beyond the building envelope of Lot 18. It consists of native landscaping and drought-tolerant species. Here's an aerial image of the appellant's lot, you can see the outline of the building envelope, and the location of the trees, and the vineyards. Again, I'd just like to repeat that the, beyond the building envelope, it's, it's not intended to be used as a backyard, and this area is supposed to be retained for native habitat and for required landscaping. Here are three aerial images of the appellant's lot, starting from 2011, which is shortly after the appellant purchased the property. And with, within the semi-circle, the red semi-circle here, is native habitat that, as part of the mitigation measures, must be protected. In 2012, this picture shows the beginning of alterations of that area, looks like they started installing some vineyards, and I'm not quite sure if that's grass or not. And it also shows the removal of the native habitat.
Excuse me?
Yes.
In that 2011 picture?
Yes.
Are those trees like valley oak, or what are those trees?
I believe that's chaparral.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So in 2013, it continued, the vineyard grew, and then they installed some avocado trees. I'd like to point out that in 2012, in early 2012 February, the county had a meeting with the HOA, and actually, the appellants were in attendance at that meeting, and we were notified that vineyards had been installed, and at that meeting, the county made them aware that vineyards are not in compliance with the existing conditions of approval in the landscaping plan, and if they wanted to keep these vineyards, they would need to go through a process to do that, which would be to apply for a modification. Here are some pictures of the property again, you can see the avocado trees up at the top picture, and the lower picture shows some more of the vineyards along the south slope. The appellant's grounds of appeal number three, HOA-approved plantings. The county is required to approve any and all plantings, proposed changes within the subdivision, and the HOA does not have exclusive jurisdiction to approve or modify any of these conditions or landscaping plan. Appellant's grounds of appeal number four, plantings not inconsistent with SRP, which is Scenic Resource Protection overlay. The SRP overlay is not applicable to the subject property, since the subject property's not located within this overlay zone. You can see a map, now below the site is indicated with a red star, and the scenic resource areas are in green, and so it's not within that area. The planning division provided public notice of this hearing in the Ventura County Star. We notified property owners within 300 feet radius of the project through a meld notice, and we posted this onto the planning division website. The appellant's recommended actions are to reverse the decision of planning division and void the violation case. And again, I'd like to bring you back to the question of, and the narrow issue before you, that did the appellant alter the existing approved landscaping plan within the designated open space area? And the answer to that is yes, for the, the planning division believes it's yes. The planning division's recommended actions are to deny the appeal case, to find that the notice of violation was issued in accordance with the Ventura County Non-Coastal Zoning Ordinance, and uphold the violations, and designate the planning director and the Resource Management Agency as a custodian of the records of proceedings. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm available?
Yeah, hold on, got to go by the rules, since this is a separate appeal.
Yeah.
Any disclosures?
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
Disclosure of the fact that I drive by it twice a day to go to my office. Okay, now, any questions, Ms. Rosengarten?
Back there, you said, open space. When you said that, does that include the buffer zone?
Yes, it does. Anything beyond the building envelope of the property? Anything beyond the building envelope of the property is considered open space.
Any other questions at this time, staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Once again, we will follow the standard procedures. Appellant, anybody for Kate?
For the record, this is Kate Nicewonder, and I represent the appellants. I'm going to keep this very brief because you've already heard most of the issues in relation to the Lybrich matter. Could I get the gentleman in the, to put up Slide Number Three? Thanks. The map here, this is Exhibit Eight again, from your staff report. You can see that the landscape buffer area is, pretty much contains the grapes on this property, although there is, there are grapevines in the designated open space area down below. We have a few fruit trees as well, and those trees within the buffer, we would like to have stay. But we understand now, having spent a lot of time on this, that that restricted open space area that is at the bottom of that lot should be maintained for native plants. We understand that. But we would like to keep the grapes in the buffer area. In the notice of violation that was provided to the Prophets, I think it's important to note that no one's ever said anything about the side yard area. And in fact, throughout the community, that has never been enforced, ever. And if you look at the maps that we provided to you, I provided you small copies in the letters, you can see that. There's things in the side yard areas, including retaining walls and hardscaping and all that sort of thing, and some of it required county permits. No one's ever said a word about the side yard. So today, I'm afraid, is the first time I'm being told that there's going to be some kind of restriction on that side yard area, and maybe that's something that the HOA can deal with in the future. Like the Lybrich lot, there's also a fire hazard for the Prophet lot, although that is not mentioned in the staff report. There's not a lot of difference between what's happening on the Prophet lot and the Lybrich lot. Both are at risk from fire, from non-irrigated brush, and native plants. As I told you in the letter that we submitted, at the time the Prophets purchased this lot in 2011, there was nothing on that lot. That photograph that you just saw, that's news to the Prophets. When they got there, in fact, if you look at that photograph, it shows the fence that the Prophets did put in. They're not cited for it, it's not in the notice of violation, but it's there. It actually curved around past the native plants, keeping them outside of the fence line. Where again, and I don't want to repeat myself, you guys have been very generous with your time today, but I do want to mention that the conditions of approval require the planting of landscaping outside of the building envelope. Condition 15E of the condition of approvals say that plants, and again, I go back to Condition Eight, Mediterranean species, but it says, "Plant, plants. Don't leave a bare slope." That's not allowed under the conditions of approval, and yet, when the Prophets arrived at their lot, Lot 18, that entire area was bare. Planting these grapes and these fruit trees cannot be an offensive use of this lot. Aesthetically, agricultural is all through the Santa Rosa Valley. What would be surprising is bare ground, which is what you had before the Prophets planted their fruit trees and their grapes. Like Mr. Lybrich, the Prophets understand that their fence is too far down the slope per the conditions, and they've already informed the county. They're willing to move that. What they do want to do is keep at least some of the grapes that they have planted within their landscape buffer and, of course, the side yard. Then, when and if the Homeowners Association begins their revegetation work, then the grapes that are encroaching into that open space area can be replaced, but we would ask that you not ask for removal of any of these grapes now, that we wait for the Homeowners Association to do their work. Like Mr. Lybrich's grapes, the Prophets' plantings are congruent with the agricultural feel of the area. They're Mediterranean in nature. The plantings are not harmful to the open space plants that, at least for the moment, do not exist. And therefore, like the situation with Mr. Lybrich, we would ask that you grant the appeal as to the grapevines and the fruit trees within that landscape buffer, and if you decide to do so, the Prophets are happy to move their fence to within 12 feet of the building envelope, as stated in the conditions of approval. As with, as I explained to you with Mr. Lybrich, we had several meetings with the county. I personally attended several of them and met with Winston Wright, asked, "Can we just deal with this on our own as individual property owners?" And we were told we could not do that. Like the comments I made in relation to the Lybrich appeal, the Prophets are willing to do whatever it takes to make this work. The only thing that they would ask is that they be allowed to retain the grapes within the landscape buffer. Obviously, that designated open space area should be revegetated into native plants. And with that, thank you.
Any questions to Kate at this time? Kate, I do have one. You answered the first one. They bought it in 2011, and depending on when that picture was taken, I can understand the situation. You provided us with a copy of the approved landscape plan for Lot 18. I don't see a date on it, so I'm going to make my second assumption of the day that they purchased the property with an approved landscape plan? Or did they submit this?
Oh, they did.
The Prophets did, to the HOA.
Yes, the Prophets submitted their landscape plan for the front. Now, mind you, for the front, that can, the condition of approval that Ms. Rosengarten read into the record a moment or two ago, that front area was fully approved by the HOA. And in retrospect, it appears that the HOA approved plants for that front area that are not technically within the plant pallet. But it was approved, absolutely.
Okay. My purpose of my question is, did they purchase the property with an approved landscape plan, or did they provide it?
Did you, I have to ask?
Okay.
The Prophets then provided it.
I'm just getting to whether or not you relied on something that came before you, that's my point. All right, thank you.
All right.
Anybody in favor of the appeal? All right. I see Ms. Gottlieb already getting up. Once again, Sandra, name and address, please.
Thank you. Sandra Gottlieb, G-O-T-T-L-I-E-B. Address 11900 West Olympic Boulevard, Suite 700, Los Angeles, California 90064. Firm name is Swedelson, S-W-E-D-E-L-S-O-N. Gottlieb, G-O-T-T-L-I-E-B. I will do service to Kate's short presentation, and will keep mine short as well. I want to comment on the fact that this is somewhat different than Mr. Lieberich's situation because Mrs. Prophet is on the board, so she is wearing the hat of the homeowner who knows, because she's a board member, what she is or is not doing, and whether it is or is not compliant with the association's governing documents and the plan. The recent litigation initiated by them has resulted in putting the association in a particularly bad situation because the congeniality that it has been afforded by staff towards resolution is going to be sorely tested during litigation. I do want to say that the Fire Marshal, on two occasions in 2012, or in 2012, required a clearing of the designated open space area on Lot 18, not once, but two times, because they were concerned, the Fire Marshal or the, a Fire Suspension Manager was concerned about the ongoing fire risk. So the assoc-
Sir, you have to come up here because it needs to be on the record.
It was for the entire association, not just the designated open space area on-
Please state your name and then your comment.
William Witt.
Thank you.
I just want to make a correction so it's not misspoken. It was for the entire HOA, not a singular lot, but it was for the entire association.
Thank you.
So that the association was based, put in the similar situation that the Prophets and Lieberich was stating, and that is, the county wants certain compliances by the association, the corporation, and then the Fire Department comes in and says, "Remove that, there's a fire danger here." And so there, the association is trying to maintain the buffer area and allow for the natural state to occur in the designated open space, but when the Fire Marshal comes in and says, "You shall remove," you shall remove because it is their mandate. So it would be fantastic if the two departments were actually communicating on this as well, and hopefully, the association can assist in facilitating that so we can get a plan that will allow the association to step in and take action without it being removed because the Fire Department thinks that it might not be in compliance with their required plan. And that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner, I'm sorry. Paul?
So what did the Fire Department require?
I think it's best with your permission if Mr. Witt comes up again, because I was not representing the association at that time.
Sure. Mr. Witt?
Thank you.
And again, the reason I ask for this, there are people listening out there in radio land. Is there still a radio land out there? So it's just so they know who's speaking.
William Witt. My understanding from the Board President, I was not there during the inspection, we did pay Environmental Care, who is the landscape company, two fire suppression bills, one for the initial one, and then my understanding was the Fire Marshal came back out and required, it was, I believe, the 150, and then he did move it down to the 200 mark, and there was a second clearing, and it was from Jerry, who was the owner of Environmental Care. My understanding from him was that the clearing was significant, it was almost a removal because the material that was on the slope was fuel-related, not fire suppression material. So the slopes are almost bare out there, if you take a look at the slopes.
And so did they propose what you could do in case, when erosion starts coming? Because there's nothing holding the land together?
That came back to the discussion with, I believe, the female's name is Lynn, with a new fire suppression plant pallet, which the Board has engaged in doing with the, with staff to try to come up with that, because-
But that hasn't happened yet.
That hasn't happened because we, again, and there's no communication with the declaration. The Board has also had to asphalt half of their streets because the streets aren't completed. There's, the project is incomplete as far as the declaration end of it and the homeowner's side of it. There has not been a completion yet of the project.
Thank you. Any other questions of those opposing? The question is, what litigation? Ms. Gottlieb? Primarily, is the county a party?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, what is the litigation? Who has filed what against whom?
The Prophets, I believe, have filed, have filed a lawsuit against the county.
Does County Counsel have any knowledge of this?
To clarify, the county was sued by the Prophets, the Johnsons, the Prophets and the Johnsons. There was a Solar Rights Act claim. My office successfully defended that lawsuit, and it's no longer pending.
So it's not an active case?
No.
All right. Okay, any other questions of Ms. Gottlieb? Counselor? Everybody?
Regarding the litigation, it was a writ of mandate, trying to get clarification on the solar rights issue, the same issue that you have heard today. And Mr. Barnes did, in fact, successfully get it thrown out on grounds it was not right because we had not gone through the proper appeal process. At some point, we may end up back there again. I'm not going to suggest that we don't. What would be better is if we could get the variances that we were talking about today and get those things installed with the proper permits and the proper okays from the county, which is the method that we are going to proceed upon immediately after speaking on a break with Ms. Pearlheart. I think that we're going to head that direction and hopefully, get to the right spot.
Okay.
As far as the other comments that were made, I just want to clarify that Mrs. Prophet has been on the Board for about a year, year and a half tops. So she did come in after the house had been constructed. We, I have spoken to my clients about the motion that was made in the prior appeal for Mr. Lybrich, and that does seem like a reasonable way to handle this. So with that, thank you.
Any questions? No, thank you very much. All right. Anybody else wish to speak for, name and address, and then please fill out a speaker card?
My name is Dr. Gary Prophet. I'm the owner of 13660 Pacific Breeze. My concern, sitting here for the last four hours, and I'm a physician, which has taken a lot of time out of my day, as well as yours, and I appreciate your time. None of this had to happen, none of us had to come here today if we would have had cooperation from the Planners Department. We have done everything to say, "We'll do whatever it takes to change things," but you need to modify them to some degree, and they are stuck in the mud with what they've got, and they will not change it. And we had to come to this party to get some respect as to what our problem is. As you've mentioned here, this is a quagmire. The builder sold our souls for this property to get the county to approve certain things that are just not doable. And we're sitting here, I'm paying attorney's fees, you're sitting here, and none of this had to happen if the Planners and Kim and her staff would have been able to sit down and work with us. And I find that abominable. This is so typical of government and so typical of the red tape that's there. This is, these things are very simple to solve if we sat down and we faced off. But she is totally obstinate to do anything and her staff, and I want to make that on the record, okay? And I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Prophet. But again, if anybody speaks, it's staff, it's appellate, it's not individuals, personalities. But I appreciate your intensity and frustration. All right, is there anybody else? Staff? Any follow-up? Before we get to that, I do have one question, particularly since, and it's more generic. We have a fire mitigation, so we lay slopes bare, and I'm looking at the flood control conditions, and they're pretty generic, written back in 1999, but obviously, we have one department asking for slopes to be stripped, and then if we get a rain before we can resolve this matter, there's a downstream issue. And I'm just bringing this up, not seeking an answer, just an observation. Followed with Commissioner Rodriguez, we get different departments doing certain things, and then, as Dr. Prophet pointed out, they're kind of caught in the middle. But my real question to staff is, when these mitigation biological resources were written, there's nothing that addresses the downstream non-native invasion issue. Again, I'll make my third assumption for the day, that that was probably assumed, that for the reason of keeping in the landscape and open space to keep the native vegetation and keep the non-native down. But I need to think that needs to be articulated in the future, and we do that for the purposes that we prevent the downstream non-native invasion in our county. So it's just an observation I wanted to make, and I think County Counsel can't jump at me, I'm just making an observation in deliberation. All right. If there is nobody else to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, deliberation?
Do you want a motion?
We'd like to make the same motion that we made on the last one.
Yes, I'll make the motion, follow recommended staff action.
With the inclusion of abatement of the-
Similar comments and reference abatement and-
Enforcement?
Enforcement that were made by Commissioner Onstock in the previous case.
You want to click on the floor and give me a motion? Does the clerk have the? You feel comfortable with the motion? Parallel to the last one? All right. Did you second that?
I will, second.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? Everybody clear on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, neg. All right, ladies and gentlemen, as the Dr. Prophet pointed out, we have been here for a while, but that's what we do here, and we appreciate everybody's time. As I've often said, there's two things people should never see, and that's the making of sausage, and the second is the legal process. But we do get to the point. I believe staff and the appellants have been given some direction. I believe staff and the appellants have been given some direction, and it truly is a quagmire. And to Ms. Gottlieb and to Mr. Witt, I do not admire the position you're in. I have been in it personally. So as they say in Argentina, mazatoff. With that, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes item number eight on our agenda. We'll give you a couple minutes to leave the room. We're simply going to go into discussions. You're certainly welcome to listen to the report of the Planning Director. But thank you for your time. I feel everybody was well represented here today. Madam Director, item number nine, reports.
Thank you, Chair Westner. I just want to take a moment to go over your schedule. So you have a busy schedule next Tuesday. You have three items on the agenda?
Tuesday or Thursday?
I'm sorry, on Thursday.
Did you just promote us to Board Supervisors?
I'm going to update you on theirs as well. So I would expect next week to be a rather long hearing. You have one CUP for a wireless facility. You have an appeal of the Planning Director's decision to grant a permit adjustment to the Todd Road jail. The appellant is the City of Santa Paula. And you also have an appeal of the --
Excuse me, Kim.
Pardon me?
Conflict of interests.
I'm thinking, yeah, do I have anything there? I'm not, I've never been exactly thrilled with the location of the jail. I'm just wondering if that arises to the level of, no, I guess it doesn't. Being a resident of the City of Santa Paula doesn't, I don't think so.
You don't have any other authoritative power to, but we'll have County Council take a look at it for us more.
Just so I understand, Commissioner Onstot, you live in the City of Santa Paula, so that would be the basis for a potential conflict?
Yes.
Okay, but you don't live in, say, 500 feet of the jail facility?
No, I live east of the City of Santa Paula, between Santa Paula and Fillmore.
Okay, yeah, that wouldn't create a conflict.
All right. Then I need to ask a follow-up question. Add at any time, have you been an advocate for any action against the county regarding Todd Jail?
No.
All right, thank you very much.
I thought you were going to ask me if I was incarcerated.
I've got a similar follow-up question for County Council, since I was employed for 32 years with the Sheriff, 34 years with the Sheriff's Department.
That's not a conflict. There's a rule that says receipt of a salary or benefits or any other compensation from a public agency cannot create a conflict.
And how long have you been retired?
I've been retired 12 and a half years.
I would think there'd be enough distance.
I'm surprised he remembers who he worked for.
He's been in Hawaii for three weeks, he can't remember it. Okay. Thank you, Madam Director.
And then we have a final appeal on that day, which is the appeal of the Planning Director's equivalency determination, and an appeal of a notice of violation, and that is for the Hagel Lumber Company in Somas. So we have those three items. And then what is happening at the Board on Tuesday, the 22nd? They're hearing two things that come to them from your commission. They're hearing the density bonus ordinance and the housing elements update, which your commission recommended approval, 5-0 to the Board. So they'll be hearing that on the 22nd. They will also be hearing the City of Moore Park's appeal for your Board's 5-0 decision to allow the Grimes Rock expansion project to occur. That will happen on Tuesday. And then on November the 12th, the Board of Supervisors will be hearing the Colton Lee Communities' general plan amendment, zone change tentative map, plan development permit, and their discretionary tree permit. That was also recommended approval by your Board, so that will be heard, I mean, by your commission, so that will be heard at the Board on November the 12th.
Excuse me, was that the San Jose Nolos issue?
San Jose Nolos, that's correct.
A question of County Council. I had email communication forwarded to me via planning, commenting about my comments and participation, et cetera, at that hearing by one of the homeowners. And I was asked if I would be willing to provide any further thoughts or direction, if you will. I haven't responded. What are my, I mean, it's post-hearing, so it's not a declaration issue, but what, where am I at here?
Right, thanks for, thanks for flagging the issue. I would advise you not to respond. There's a possibility, I believe, it could be mistaken, but I believe there's a theoretical possibility for the Board to send the matter back down for further direction. And so I could be wrong, but the safer course of action would be not to refrain from discussing the issue or act like the matter still could come before you, and you don't want to have any ex parte communications for that reason.
Great, thank you very much.
Anything else, Madam Chair? Madam Director?
That's all I have, unless you have something for me.
All right, planning commissioners, is there anything?
Wait a minute, I have a comment. I was less than thrilled to find out that there had been litigation that resolved this issue of the preemption of the solar panel. I would have thought that that would have been something we would have heard. I would have liked to have known that had been adjudicated.
I apologize for that. And just to clarify the posture of the lawsuit, as Ms. Nice-Winder mentioned, I got rid of it on the basis that it wasn't ripe for adjudication, and so the court didn't address the, any substantive matter. And so I didn't, quite frankly, I didn't want to, I know you guys are busy.
Wasn't decided on the merits, then?
Right, exactly.
And I, I'm sorry, do I really?
No, 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 no. I think it was simply appropriate, and in County Council, I think you're appropriate. But I think in the future, it would help us to know where the county has been in the process, whether it was relative, you feel it's relative or not. It helps us at least answer that upfront, so then, at least in our deliberations, not that it should affect one or anything, but we should have all the knowledge. Anyway, I don't fault you at all. I understand as an attorney, you felt you dealt with, because it wasn't on the merits. However, that's not what the public's going to see. So, okay. My only other comment, again, is, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Barrett.
One last comment. Generally and specifically today, I'm very impressed with the staff reports and the presentation, PowerPoint presentations. They're clear succinct and, you know, to the point. I think it keeps us, helps keep us, keeps us focused. So to, if you extend my comments to your staff and yourselves for the work you put into this thing, it's, you guys, as frustrated as we feel, as frustrated as we feel here, I think you guys are even more so. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate that. We have been trying to raise the bar, you know, on our PowerPoints, and this was Franca's first time.
But she did a very fine job.
She did a very fine job. She was very nervous and did a lot of practicing, but I thought she did a really fine job, so I will let her know.
Of course, as soon as she turns to the right up there, you know, she goes away from the microphone, and you're going, "What'd she say?" Southfoist.
Yeah, she did a fine job.
But I like to say that, you know, I see this consistently at every meeting, that whoever's out there, whoever the planner's out there, and the folks over here, just, you guys do a bang-up job.
And that's exactly what I was going to echo, was the fact that your staff --
Despite the fact that you're a heartless woman who won't negotiate.
And that's what you get paid to do, Frank. No, you're being fair and equitable, and you're operating under the rules that you are given, and that's what your responsibility as a professional is. That's why we have appeal processes to make those deliberations. So I, too, that's what I was going to say, I wanted to concur with my colleagues here. I continue to have nothing but deep faith every time the staff steps forward, regardless what is arisen said. I put tremendous amount of weight on your testimony and your facts. I find them to be fair and equitable at all times. And, and at least it used to be the policy under Mr. Turner, that if one of the staff was highly recommended, they had to bring donuts in the next day. So please let Ms. Franca know that she has a responsibility, okay?
Donuts for staff tomorrow. I will let her know.
And the clerk will put in her request for her specific kind. How's that for direction? All right. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none? This meeting is closed. We'll see you next --